Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let me call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for Tuesday, December 4th, 2018. Let me remind everyone who will address the board to make sure you sign in on the clipboard that's on the table in front of me. Make sure the microphone's turned on and you speak clearly into it so the folks at home can hear you. Let me appoint Nelson into a voting position in for Neil, unless Neil arrives later, and we'd have a full board and Nelson wouldn't get to vote. Let me announce to anyone who's here for item four on our agenda, which is the La Montagne Builders' Proposal with a whole bunch of lots in the area of Cathy Street, Constance Street, Reed's Ferry Way. That applicant has asked to continue that until our January meeting, so there's no need for you to stay if you're interested in weighing in on that one.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, that's been withdrawn.
Withdrawn?
It will be re-noticed whenever it comes back.
Thank you for that correction. So if you're here for that one, there won't be any substance to the discussion about that one today. Other than that, that brings us to item two on our agenda, which is the Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report. Tim, do you have any report for us today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In your pack, you find a memo from Robert Price, Planning and Zoning Administrator, on the regional impact for the Arnie LLC subdivision. Staff recommends that it is not a project of regional impact as it does not meet the regional impact determination criteria.
What's the will of the board with respect to that regional impact determination?
I'll so move.
And I so second.
Motion by Lynn, second by Alistair, to support the staff's recommendation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero, to uphold the regional impact recommendation. Tim, is there anything else that you'd like to address?
Not at this point in the meeting.
Are there any questions by members of the board for the staff? Seeing none, let's move on on our agenda. Item three is the Arnie LLC, as the applicant and owner, review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a two-lot subdivision. The parcel's located at 63 Wilson Hill Road in the R1 residential by zoning map and Ocfa Conservation Districts, tax map 4B lot 130. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This project has a little bit of a history to it. Back in 1989, this property received a variance for frontage and conditional approval for a subdivision from the zoning board and planning board respectively. The conditions of approval on the subdivision at that time were never met, and both the variance at the time and the subdivision approval had expired. The applicant came back, this new property owner, to request essentially the same variance with the zoning board, which was initially denied by the zoning board. It was appealed, went through the Superior Court process, was remanded back to the zoning board, and upon rehearing, the board did grant the variance to allow the lot to have less than required frontage for one of the two lots, the other lot having sufficient frontage to meet the requirements of the ordinance. So we are back here for the planning board to discuss the two-lot subdivision. It's a relatively straightforward two-lot subdivision as far as the planning board's part of the process goes. There is a memo from our assistant planner in the packet with recommendations for conditional approval. I will note that we do now have a waiver request for the sidewalk requirement that was submitted by the applicant and should have been in front of your spots this evening regarding the waiver for providing a sidewalk. We also received later today comments from the fire department regarding access to the two lots and the shared driveway, requiring that there be sufficient pavement and clear access to both lots in a turnaround that they will require prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So that particular recommendation would fall under general conditions if the board were to approve the project here tonight.
Thank you, Tim, for the introduction. And although we have a written request from the applicant, this still remains one of those where the board could determine the sidewalk waiver is not necessary.
Correct.
If we choose to go that route. All right. Kind of take that up at the right appropriate time. Please introduce yourself and tell us about the two-lot subdivision.
Good evening. Attorney Greg Michael. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott Boudreau is with me. He's the engineer that helped design the plan that we're talking about. I'm not going to reiterate what Tim has already told you regarding the history of this parcel. We're here tonight to talk about the subdivision of it. This plan is...
Grab that one and carry it around with you.
There's two things about this plan. It's identical to the one we presented to the zoning board. There are a few minor changes. It's been updated, plus the data's been changed. I know there were comments in the packet that you received, and just to keep things moving, we have no problem with the recommendations contained in the letter, the planning department's letter. I want to make that clear to the board. In addition, we will make this an easement for access for the other parcel. And again, that's noted in the document that you've got from your planning staff. It's a fairly large parcel, ten and a half acres. The proposal, again, it was only a frontage issue that caused the holdup in this particular matter. That, as Tim has pointed out, has been resolved. The lots otherwise meet the size, will meet the setbacks, will meet all of the zoning requirements regarding the lot and the lot usage itself. There really isn't much to this. It'll be a well, septic, and in speaking to our surveyor engineer, we have no problem meeting the request of the fire department for an area for a turnaround if needed in the plan. I don't know really a whole lot, what else to tell you. In looking at this, we had an engineer take a look, and the drainage isn't going to be changed significantly from what it already is. Again, it's a two-lot subdivision of a fairly large parcel of land. I'm sure the board is familiar with it. Just addressing the sidewalk issue, we did submit a waiver. There are no sidewalks on Wilson Hill Road. And one of the, I think one of the things that makes Wilson Hill Road a little bit different in terms of even thinking about it is if my memory serves me correctly, and I could stand corrected, this was designated a scenic road under the statute. I think it's 135 or a statute along those lines, which makes it difficult to cut trees, do anything close to or abutting the roadway. As the board is aware, there are stone walls, trees, and other matters that, again, contribute to the scenic status, which, again, makes a sidewalk particularly difficult in this area. And I don't believe there are any sidewalks that I'm aware of on Wilson Hill Road. On that, I'm going to stop talking. I could pontificate for a while, but I don't think it would be useful. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Any member of the board have questions for the applicant, first related to the question of whether the application's complete and appropriate for acceptance? If there's no questions, if there are more...
Chairman, I make a motion. We accept this application as complete and ready for discussion.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Christensen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero, to find the application complete. Nelson, yeah, it looks like you've got a question on your mind.
I just have a quick comment regarding Attorney Michael's statement about...
Turn your microphone on, Nelson.
Yes, I just want to make one change to Attorney Michael's statement that this is a scenic road. There was at one time a warrant article to make it a scenic road, which did not pass. It has never been...
You must not have gone to the meeting then to discuss it, Nelson. That must have been the problem.
Really?
I know there was, I said I could stand corrected. I made that, I know there's been talk about that.
But the record shows it's corrected. Thank you.
Okay. I stand corrected. But anyway. But yet it is a difficult road in the sense of the, there are a number of stone walls and a lot of trees close to the roadway, and I guess I'll leave it at that. I think the board knows the road as well as I do. Thank you.
Thank you for both of the comments on those. Other comments or questions about the substance of the application?
Can I ask the applicant if there's any wetlands anywhere on this site?
Yeah, there are wetlands on this site. There are. On the east side of the site, which is the bottom of the plan.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I got it. Thank you. I didn't pick that up. I'm sorry. I was being a bit dumb.
Any other questions or follow-ups on that? So I know we've got to go through the process of a public hearing, and here if there's any input before the board continues its deliberations. I think just to elaborate on the choice before the board with respect to sidewalks, when we've got a minor subdivision, we have in our regulations the ability to determine that certain requirements of a subdivision are not necessary for the applicant to meet. And that's typically how we've addressed the sidewalk for, request for one or two-lots, two or three-lot subdivisions. The other option is to determine whether it fits within the statutory criteria for granting a waiver, and of course, those tend to speak in terms of the spirit and the intent of the regulation, which gets a little bit confusing with sidewalks because sidewalks, the spirit and intent is to have a sidewalk. So, but whatever the will of the board is in terms of making a motion to either grant or not grant the applicant's request for relief related to sidewalks can be, whichever option the board elects to choose or not choose on that regard. Board members, let me ask you guys whether you want to debate and consider this sidewalk question before or after we accept some testimony from the public. No particular preference?
Mr. Chairman, I make a suggestion that we listen to, let people speak, and then we can make a decision accordingly.
Okay. Excellent choice. Let me ask you two gentlemen to let the table be available for folks that want to come up.
Absolutely.
And we'll open the public hearing and allow any citizens or abutters who are interested in giving the board some information, come forward and tell us about this application. Take a minute to settle in and sign in on the clipboard so that we have your name for the record, and then when you're ready, pull that microphone a little closer to you so it'll, you'll actually hear you, and then tell us what's on your mind.
Can you hear me?
I can. I can hear you no matter what, but the folks at home don't hear you without the microphone. We're on television.
Lovely. Gosh.
Please first introduce yourself and then tell us what you want us to know or think about on this application.
My name is Rhonda Tapley. My husband, John, and I have lived at 65 Wilson Hill Road for 32 years. We have known the two previous owners. Arnie LLC is requesting what appears to be a simple subdivision to create an easement, share a driveway, and create a second lot. We oppose the subdivision for a number of reasons. The current zoning board initially denied this application twice. Although the final decision was approved after litigation in court, the decision was not unanimous. There are legitimate concerns. Arnie does not intend to utilize the full 10.5 acres to properly cite the home on its own five-acre section. It appears they're using the aggregate acreage to justify placing two homes on a lot that was intended to only support one. This will exacerbate problems with soils, drainage, storm runoffs, wells, and septics. This area was rightfully designated as low density because they had the good foresight to know that increased development would cause drainage issues with poorly drained, severe soils. We are here to share our experience with building and living on this hill. Our home and the existing home at 63 Wilson Hill Road are both sited at approximately the same distance and elevation from the road. Both lots consist mainly of poorly drained, severe soils on a hill near a river. Both lots have complex driveways. The location of each of our driveways has been determined by the topography and the ledge. To be clear, there is absolutely no comparison between building on the hill and building any of the homes across the street. Those properties are accessed by short, flat, single-use driveways. I would like to tell you what it takes to actually build on this hill with poorly drained, severe soils, and how it will potentially impact abutters. Due to the contour of the land, all of the surface water drains from above and behind us. It drains onto our property, the property of the existing home at 63, and the proposed lot, the Foss property, and the seasonal stream. It then continues under the road, onto the properties across the street. Water management on this hill is a huge issue. As they began digging the hole for the foundation for our home, the surface water was filling the hole faster than they could dig. They had to dig three trenches that were four feet wide and four feet deep before they could continue. The water had to be diverted across our property and into our woods to be absorbed by the front bank. We have perimeter drains that drain water to daylight into another swale on the section of the bank. We live on a pile of rock. In order to build our septic system and leach field, we had to bring in 65 truckloads of sand. We had to install a large drainage trench across the back of the vegetable garden to divert the water. Despite our efforts, during the Mother's Day flood years ago, the water overflowed a three-foot-wide and two-foot-deep trench, traveled another 80 feet, and dumped mud up against the back of our house. We had to install a large French drain along our driveway to divert water off the driveway into the woods. The list goes on. When Mrs. M. built the existing home at 63 Wilson Hill Road, she also had issues with water and drainage. Due to the excessive rains we have experienced since July, there is a tremendous amount of water on the hill at this time. Trenches, swales, and the soil are oversaturated. We have water draining everywhere. Our perimeter drain is running like someone turned on a faucet. Our property is wide enough and situated in a way that we have been able to manage water and divert it away from the back of our house, garden, and driveway, and not direct it, and not divert it directly onto either of the properties beside us. Arnie is proposing building up on the hill, on the slope side near the Foss property. This will potentially divert excess water, mud, or debris onto the Foss property, possibly into their basement, into the seasonal stream, jam the culvert, or end up across the street. We experienced this when we built our home. We cleared the lot, it rained, and we had mud in the road. We're not alone in this issue. A few weeks ago, after heavy rain, at the other end of Wilson Hill, Brett Vaughn was clearing mud and debris from the road where he is currently clearing for new homes. Relative to this application, any excess water or mud will naturally drain toward the Foss property. On the narrow strip where Arnie is proposing to build, what will the strategy be to manage the storm runoff and erosion due to land clearing, increased impervious surfaces like pavement and asphalt roofs, septics, et cetera? Where is Arnie going to divert the water? Who will be financially responsible for the damage? And is Arnie LLC prepared to put up a bond to deal with potential abutters problems arising from land clearing and storm runoff? We are also concerned about the safety of the existing driveway as it relates to emergency vehicles. The degree of slope on the front of the property is significant, and the driveway is narrow. Is this driveway under current conditions, according to our current regulations, able to be accessed by emergency vehicles? If proper repairs are not made, does this make the driveway impassable for emergency vehicles? Will there be enough room at the top to turn around a full-sized emergency vehicle with two homes on such a limited lot size? We were living here when the Hazen home on Wilson Hill Road near the river burned to the ground with flames that could be seen for miles. If these homes cannot be properly accessed, how will that affect any persons living there, our home, or our neighbors' homes? Arnie can't guarantee that they won't have issues with rock and ledge and won't have to blast. It has already been determined that there's ledge here. This could directly affect abutters' wells. We currently have neighbors that have reported issues with wells running dry or having to manage flow by not taking a shower at the same time that they do a load of laundry. Personally, to date, we have not had issues with our well. That said, we spoke to a representative at a well company about our concerns. Our well depth is currently at 135 feet. We have been told that our water quantity or quality is more likely to be impacted by drilling or blasting than a deeper well. That would result in significant hardship and expense to us. It would certainly negatively affect our property value. We cannot imagine that it would be great news for property values on Wilson Hill Road if it became public knowledge that there are homeowners here with well issues. It has been recommended to us that if building proceeds, that all abutters have our water quantity and quality tested as a baseline to prepare for litigation if necessary. I was told that if Arnie blasts or drills, and it cuts into our water supply, that the town will not be responsible. The town of Merrimack is not in the business of selling water. Our recourse would be to hire an attorney and sue the builder. I've been told that the town will not be responsible if building a home is approved and the builder blasts or diverts water, mud, and debris onto another person's property. Our recourse would be to hire an attorney and sue the builder. Throughout this process, we have heard a lot about Arnie LLC's rights as a property owner. We would like to know what rights the existing homeowners have to protect what we have without having to bear financial burden. We are requesting that the planning board conduct a physical site walk and/or drive and address the concerns of the abutters and any other concerns deemed necessary before any approval is granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tapley. Are members of the board have any questions?
I do have, I have two other things.
Oh, please.
If I could point this out.
Didn't mean to stop you. What do you got?
No, that's okay. I'm walking away from the microphone. Do I need to grab that? What do I need to do?
Bring us what you have and then sit back down to tell us about it. How about that? Are these copies or are these all different?
You can have, no, they're individual pictures.
Okay, so each one's different. I'll pass them around to everybody.
And I don't know if I can just refer to that, and then do I need a microphone?
Yeah. You do want to have a microphone to be able to do it.
Can you hear me?
Let's go this way first, and then we'll make sure the picture gets down that way.
Okay. I'm just going to refer to his map because it's up here. Actually, it looks like this. We keep having this conversation about how we're building on 10.5 acres. We are not building on 10.5 acres. This is 10.5 acres. This lot and house is already for sale at eight acres. We're talking about building on a lot that's here. In comparison, our lot is 250 feet across. This lot is 159 here. This lot is long and narrow. If you look at the contour lines, you can see this is steep. You can't build anything on this. What they're really proposing to do is build a house because you've got your proposed well area and your leaching field. The original house is here. You're proposing putting two houses within 200 feet of each other on severe soils. They're not building on 10 and a half acres. The worst part of this is, we're looking at it this way, you look at your contour lines, all of the water and the water pressure off of Wilson Hill Road comes from up here. We have water coming down on us all the time from behind. We are constantly having this issue of draining. If you look at this contour line, you can see how everything is sweeping this direction, coming to the seasonal stream and coming toward the Foss property, which is very close to this. If we start making more impervious surface right here, Mrs. M. already had a problem with water. I knew Mrs. M. She already had a problem. This is her parking area, and I'm going to say this 10 times, this does not look like this. This driveway, if you look at that picture, kind of comes up, it spins around, and it comes into here. There's a pipe that runs underneath here, and what's been happening is, over time, over the years, and Mrs. M. knew it was a problem then, the water was coming under here, and it drains out on the upper section of that driveway. What's happened over time is it's sunk. This driveway, I talked to the fire department the other day, and I asked him about this. And when I heard your comment about a turnaround at the top, he said, yes, they need to turn around at the top, but they also need this driveway 16 feet wide. I don't believe the driveway is 16 feet wide, nor would it be able to support, they have to make it support a fire engine, there was a number of other things that they have to do. And the slope can't be a certain thing, and you can't have turns, and this driveway is blind. There are, and that's why I'm asking you to drive it. You can't see what is happening with this driveway if you drive up the road. You have to literally get on the driveway and try to make the turn and see that it's blind. If you have two families, I'm told that the board doesn't really have any control over two families living up here and whether they crash into each other. The fire department does say he needs to be able to have space, and the driveway also needs to be cleared 12 months of the year. The photographs that you're looking at are, one section was taken in February when the weather was dry of this year. The next one was taken after we had gotten 15.8 inches of snow. As you can see, you can't see the driveway. You wouldn't even know where the driveway is. It just looks like a hill.
Thank you for the additional information in the photographs. Do you wish for these photographs to be entered into the record, or do you want them back? Okay. So once everybody's had a chance to view them, make sure they end up down there with Tim.
Oh. Did they see him over there?
Yeah, they did. They went first. Kind of came back this way. Hang on a second. Let me see if any board members have any questions or wanting more information from you. Any questions at all from the witness? Thank you very much for your testimony. Is there another person who would like to weigh in?
Yes.
Please come forward, take a minute to sign in on the clipboard and settle in, and then when you're ready, please first introduce yourself, and then tell us what's on your mind.
I live at 67 Wilson Hill Road. I have some concerns regarding the division of 63 Wilson Hill Road, which I'd like to discuss. I understand that it is the owner's right to divide their property to make additional money. However, the people who share that driveway would be left with problems that they did not anticipate. I would like to share my experience of what it was like to share a long driveway with a neighbor. I'm a fairly new resident to Merrimack. I moved from Milford, where I lived for 27 years. I've been living in, on 67 Wilson Hill Road for two years. So I'd like to talk about that experience in Milford. My home was located on five acres of land. The previous owners had divided their property prior to selling the house. Those five acres had a partial easement on my land, excuse me, the five acres behind that house had a partial easement on my land, specifically the first tenth of a mile from the road. The deed stated that both properties would have to share the maintenance of that tenth of a mile. The land behind my property did not sell for a few years. Once that land was sold, the developer started driving their trucks up the driveway, causing damage to the driveway. Asked the developer to repair the driveway, their solution was to just apply a few patches. After the land was cleared, the developer drilled the well, but they couldn't find a water vein. They had to blast underground to find that vein. After blasting, my very dry basement flooded. There were six inches of water in the basement. At first, I thought it was just the gas water had let, the gas water heater had let go. However, it was not just the water heater. After inspection, my previously dry basement was now wet all the time from the blasting. I had invested in a sump pump system to contain the water because the basement now flooded after every single rainstorm. I didn't realize at the time that all the wetness in that basement created a mold problem. It was also the start of my problems with asthma. I eventually had the basement tested, and it was full of mold. I spent over $10,000 to have everything removed from the basement and hire a mold mitigation company to have them mitigate the mold. My asthma then reduced after the mitigation, and since I've moved to Merrimack, it's almost non-existent. As I said before, the owners of the property behind the house were required to support the maintenance. There was about 9,684 square feet, so that's eight feet by a tenth of a mile. The driveway had an incline and a few curves. Originally, I had Shattuck plow the driveway. Shattuck is a well-known, okay, everybody knows him. When the neighbors moved in, they volunteered to plow the driveway with their Beater pickup truck for the gas money. There were times when I couldn't get to work on time because they didn't plow the driveway on time, or I would need to tow out their pickup. There were also times that their cars would just get stuck and block the driveway. The following years after that, we decided to split the cost and have Shattuck do the entire driveway. I contracted Shattuck, and at the end of the season, would ask the neighbors for money. After a few years of not getting paid until September, I requested payment at the end of each month. Every few years, the driveway required seal coating. This was a constant battle because when they first moved in, they had a lot of money and were able to help with the cost of seal coating. After the two boys arrived, their ability to cover that cost dwindled, and they were not willing to cover their portion of the cost. This reduced the maintenance of the driveway. Eventually, the neighbors had the two, and the two boys, their father bought them a variety of powered toys. They had motorcycles, snowmobiles, and ATVs. The boys would come home from school or during the weekends and ride their motorized toys up and down the driveway for hours and hours. The boys were not very considerate, and the noise from the motors would go on for hours. There were times where it was not safe for me to drive down my own driveway because the boys would speed up and drive down the driveway, and they would not pay attention. There were times when other neighbors, not me, called the police because the boys were riding their toys in the street. The police would come up to my house and ask, were those my children? The rocks from the neighbor's gravel driveway covered the area where the two driveways met and pitted the blacktop, making it hard to maintain the driveway. This was caused from the boys going up and down the driveway. We didn't have that problem in the winter because of the snow and the snowmobiles, but the motorcycles and the ATVs, it was just all pitted, and I would spend hours sweeping the driveway. As the boys got older and in high school, there were times when their friends' cars would line up on the side of the driveway with their friends smoking and drinking. And I would find all sorts of bottles and cigarettes on the side of the driveway. The parents showed an indifference to their behaviors. I talked to them politely, but it's difficult. You want to be polite with your neighbors. The driveway in Milford was wide, 18 feet, and it had gentle hills and curves. I took the opportunity to drive up the house at 63 Wilson Hill Road with my pickup. There were blind curves, and the driveway was very steep. At one point, my wheels slipped on the wet leaves covering the driveway, and my pickup truck went into traction control. It was hard to know, it was hard to know where the driveway was because you couldn't tell the difference between the leaves and where the woods was. I found it very hard to negotiate it. I can't imagine two neighbors or a fire truck negotiating that driveway. The prior owners dividing the property have a shared, when the prior owners divided the property, they did not take into consideration what it would be like to share a driveway. Building the house on the hill behind me caused severe foundation problems, which caused me to spend thousands of dollars to fix a wet basin, basement, and mitigate for a severe mold problem. I had to maintain a driveway with people who could not afford to help with the maintenance and repairs to the driveway and did not teach the children to respect the neighbors. It's true, the property owners have the right to do what they want within the law. However, whose responsibility will it be if things go wrong with the shared driveway or the construction of the new house with a challenging topography? Again, Rhonda asked you to go and take a trip up 63 Wilson Hill Road. I did it with my pickup, and I had problems. So, I invite you to all do that and see what it's like for that driveway. My other major concern is, once they start building that foundation, once they start drilling that well, will it have effect on the Foss's property? And you have to think about that. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Goodman. I don't know, any member of the board have questions for her? All set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there other butters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Come on forward and take a minute to get settled in and sign in on the clipboard, and then, when you're ready, please introduce yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Julie Foss. Am I loud enough here?
Yes.
My name is Julie Foss, and I'm here to speak on the behalf of my parents and brother, Bill, Doris, and Joseph Foss, who are the owners of the property at 55 Wilson Hill Road, to explain why they are in opposition to granting of the subdivision request by Arnie LLC at 63 Wilson Hill Road. Specifically, they are concerned in regards to the effect on their property as the new subdivision directly abuts their property, which in this drawing would be underneath the bottom. Their major concerns are the status of their well, the effect any blasting would have on their foundation, the flow of water into the stream that ends up on their property but orders both as it starts, the wetlands in the back of the property that would be near where they would like, most likely, build a house, possible runoff from the leach field that would run into the stream that goes across the road into a culvert behind the two houses on the other side of Wilson Hill Road, and eventually drains into the South Egan River, and any additional subdivision of the remaining eight-acre property at 63 Wilson Hill Road. Just to begin with, my parents have occupied this home since 1980, 38 years. They've lived in town since 1963. And to date, they've had minimal issues with their well, water in their basement, and any excess water from the stream that's near their home. Due to the prevalence of ledge throughout the properties on the west side of Wilson Hill Road, they are concerned about any blasting and even digging that would be required in order to build a home if the subdivision is granted. The well on my parents' property is an artesian well, and of course, the concern about blasting required for this will cause a shift in the veins that run through the ledge, resulting in loss of water to their home. As previously stated, this well's been in place and functioning for 38 years, and the only major issue they've had in that entire time was two years ago during the drought, when they were required to move the pump down 500 feet in that well to maintain water level. Due to the fact that there is no plan long-term for water septic sewer to be put on Wilson Hill Road, any work performed on the potential subdivision that would cause a loss of water to the home would be a hardship for both my parents and my brother. This also has a potential for impacting other homes in the area as the full effects of water being diverted in the veins can affect many other wells and could take several years to materialize. As I'm sure the planning board is aware, the effect of the recent drought had on a number of homes along Wilson Hill Road, causing water outage. Also due to the amount of ledge on the proposed property, there's concern that any blasting would cause damage to their foundation due to the proximity of their home to this property. I don't know what the rules and regulations are in regards to that, but that is their concern. In fact, water in the basement of the home has occurred only once in 38 years, and that was due to one of the major floods we had about 15 years ago, the Mother's Day flood, and I think the year after that, there was another major flood. And that occurred once in 38 years, so the foundation's been in pretty good shape. A third concern is the stream that runs from the back of the two properties, almost like a wetlands in the back of the property, along the property line from the back of it, and eventually it moves over in its entirety onto my parents' property. At one point, this stream runs approximately 30 to 40 feet from my parents' home. The stream then runs into a culvert, as previously slated, under Wilson Hill Road and be underneath two properties to the back of their properties and a wetlands back there. And of course, drains into the river. Because both the properties of 55 and 63 Wilson Hill Road sit on ledge, it's not unreasonable to be concerned that a shift in the water flow from the wetland lever and just below the surface of the ground above the ledge would be increased to blasting or digging on the approved property as the land naturally slopes down to my parents' property at 55 Wilson Hill Road. And this would result in additional water coming onto my parents' property, even if all the wetland setbacks are properly adhered to. In fact, last Friday, I took the opportunity to walk my parents' property line, and it appeared to me that there was a lot of, there was sections of standing water outside the flags placed during the February 2018 survey of the property. I'm not an expert on wetlands, so I hope, and I could be mistaken. So, I hope that someone with the proper credentials would do a survey of that to see what the boundaries of the wetlands are, to ensure that all the setbacks and everything, if this proposed thing, pro-subdivision is approved, that they would take care of that. As previously stated by the previous two speakers, the properties at 65 and 67 have had serious issues with excessive water coming down the hill from their, onto their properties. And as I stated, they've had to undergo extensive and expensive remediation to resolve those issues. What would effect of a new blasting to develop a new home in this area cause all of the homeowners on the west side of Wilson Hill Road? While the plan that Arnie LLC has provided to the planning board show the proper setback of the septic system from both land, wetlands and the property line, my parents are concerned that any issue with the leach field will result in sewage on my parents' property, which, due to the slope of the land, and will eventually run into the stream and ultimately the South Egan River. If there is contamination, who would be found responsible for the issue? My parents, future owners of this property, or the developer? In regards to any future subdivision of what would be the remaining eight acres at 63 Wilson Hill Road would only add the concern my parents have about the water flow on their property and any potential drilling for new wells up there that would cause effect in the future. Is there any, there is a potential that access could be granted via the new subdivision already approved off Old Blood Road via the power line section? And can a restriction be placed on this property that will prohibit any further subdivision? My parents have respect for property, for the property rights of other owners, but they believe those rights require the assurance that the neighboring properties, in this case, 55 Wilson Hill Road, do not experience hardship or change to any actions undertaken if the new subdivision is granted for 63 Wilson Hill Road. They have questions about who would be responsible for any long-term damage done to their home, their well, just the character of their home if any mud or anything was to slip. Arnie LLC is a development company. And by the time some of this damage is probably noted, they'll have sold these properties and moved on to the next, to the next development. So, who would be responsible? Who would take the financial responsibility for this thing? And as previously stated, my parents would really like to have the planning board walk the property, not just drive up the road, but draw, walk the property line between 55 and 63 Wilson Hill Road, see the water, see the slope of the land, that kind. And my parents strongly request that the planning board disapprove the request for a subdivision at 63 Wilson Hill Road. I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Foss. I do have a question. I, you made a point about other properties in the area or access to other ones, and I didn't fully follow what you were telling. Can you give me that one again?
Give me a second to find it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, this property abuts open space land that's part of the Chestnut Hill subdivision. The partial, the portion of Chestnut Hill, the cluster subdivision that abuts this, is permanently protected open space, would not be available for access into this property.
I was not aware of that at the time.
So, that would be, where's my orientation? There's north. To the north, Chestnut Hill's over there, okay. And that's the area you were concerned about, maybe some connection?
About the subdivision, future subdivision, if a road could be put there.
Okay.
But if it's permanently protected as open space, then that resolves that issue.
Yeah, it is. Dan, you had a question?
Yeah, Ms. Foss, thanks for your testimony. Quick question, was your parents' house built before or after 63 was built?
No, this house, we built, they've lived in town since 63, down off Ambrose Road, but they built this home between 78 and 1980. We moved in in 1980.
Okay, was 63 Wilson there already?
No, that was just, it might have been subdivided property. No one was built on that when they moved in. The home currently on the property is on the other side.
Right, so it was built after your parents' home?
Right.
So, when they dug the well, did your parents have any issue with?
No, not at that time.
Okay.
This is much closer to their current home and their current well than the other property is.
Okay, well, that's what I'm trying to get at. Like, if it's not going to affect it, you know, 20 years ago, why do you think it's going to affect it now?
It's ledge, you never know what's going to happen. And they are concerned. I'm just speaking for them.
Thank you, Ms. Foss. Alistair, did you have a question?
Yeah, could you just enlighten me? Is this the basement or the foundations of your parents' home? Is it concrete, or is it sort of rocks or whatever?
Concrete. Concrete.
It is concrete, thank you.
It's not that old. Yeah, it's a relatively modern home.
Yeah, 1980.
Yeah, so, but anyway, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? Nelson?
One other question. Is there a, was the wetland boundaries determined by a soil scientist here?
Certified wetland scientist, yes.
It is, it's not so marked on the plan.
It's one of the requirements and proposed conditions is that all stamps and signatures of appropriate professionals be placed on the plan.
But it was done?
It was done by the certified wetland scientist, yes.
May I ask a question on when that occurred?
That's a question you'd have to ask the, well, the board can ask when the applicant comes back up.
There's a note on this plan that says, "Wetlands shown hereon were delineated on January 16, 2018, by AMBIT Engineering, the wetland classified as halistrained, forested, broad-leafed, deciduous wetland system that is seasonally flooded and/or saturated." So, I assume that that's the work that's been done that's indicated on the plan, and then what we need is to ultimately have that signature and stamp from that professional.
Yeah, it was pretty dry out there at that time of year because I walked the land with my father back in February 2018. There wasn't a lot of water. There's a lot more water up there.
These wetlands guys, they're not just looking for water. They're actually looking at the kinds of plants and soils and mud and...
Like I said, not an expert, and I don't know, so thank you.
These guys actually look at many, 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 Mike might be able to enlighten us a little bit as what they look at because he's an engineer in the field, but not a wetland scientist, I don't believe.
Yeah, there's typically three points that they look for, and they all have to exist in some kind of symbiotic relationship for it to essentially be considered a wetland.
Thank you for that information.
Thank you, Ms. Foss. Thank you for coming forward. Take a second to settle in and sign in on the clipboard, and then introduce yourself and tell us your testimony.
My name is Hollis McGuire. I live at 67 Wilson Hill Road. I moved to Wilson Hill Road in 2016. If you drive down Wilson Hill Road, you'll notice several places along the road that always have water running on the side of the road or significant ice buildups in the cold months. The spot from 63 to 69 Wilson Hill is one of those places. Since we moved here in the summer of 2016, we've spent well over $20,000 on the various aspects of water drainage on our property, and we're expecting that 2019 is going to look similar because we have more work to do. We've installed a culvert, a French drain, a very large catch basin, and a considerable amount of trenching and piping. We've done significant driveway repairs several times. We've had ruts deeper than 14 inches after some rainstorms. We may need additional piping, no, we will now, need additional piping away from the basin as the catch basin has already overflowed. When I wrote this a few days ago, it was twice. It's now three times, and it was installed this fall. The previous owner also did a significant amount of work here trenching around the foundation to drain the water away from the house. Any additional building in this section of the road is bound to result in additional and costly water and drainage problems. And who will pay for this? I certainly don't look forward to additional problems here. I've been kind of shocked and overwhelmed by the problems that we've had in just two years, and I am concerned about the abutters. This also puts a burden on the town of Merrimack as the water runoff into the street results in erosion of the road, which has to be dealt with by the town. The problem is bad enough already, and any additional building in this section of the road is likely to make it worse. And I have three pictures that I'm going to leave with you. One is of a rainstorm, and it measured 14-inch ruts. And the other is the water flow facing towards 63 Wilson Hill. And the last one is water flow facing towards 69 Wilson Hill, showing how badly the road, which is in great condition in the other parts, is eroding because of the water flow.
Thank you for the pictures. I want to get a chance for the planning board to look at your pictures before you leave us. So, let me start with them, and then we'll all get a chance to look at them and ask you any questions. Does anyone have any other questions for this? We didn't stand.
Is it Ms. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. McGuire. Were you aware of these water issues prior to moving in?
No.
The previous homeowner didn't mention it?
No.
Neither did the realtor?
No.
That's where I'm getting at.
It was that super-dry summer, 2016.
Other comments or questions for them? Just hang in for a sec. Oh, Tom, go ahead.
So, I want to understand, you're saying that you live a couple of houses up or west of this house?
It's west, but it's actually closer to the road. It's very, it's very close. This is, we only have one acre.
I was going to say, you're on the small lot.
We're on that tiny lot.
Okay. And you've got a lot of drainage problems there. Do you have a feeling that work on the subdivision here would create drainage issues for your house?
It very well could. I mean, the water that's coming off of the hill and the unstable soil is a problem, and it seems to be a problem in that entire hill. I had no idea the Tapleys had as many problems as they did until this issue came up. I knew the water was flowing in front of their house, but...
Well, you're not downhill from this subdivision, are you?
Well, we, yeah. I don't understand the way soil and granite, et cetera, and the water flows will work, but we certainly could be affected. I mean, we're below, the hill's up here, and the water's flowing down, and it's going this way, and it's going this way, and it could absolutely be coming off of the neighbors.
Okay, but from the way I see the contours, it looks like it's coming from behind your house and not from beside your house. But I haven't seen it flowing, so I don't know for sure.
It's coming from somewhere.
Well, the sky, but, yeah.
No, it's not. I've lived in many houses, and we have a lot of water.
Hang on one second. Does anybody have any questions about the photographs that were passed around? Okay, so if there's none, thank you for your testimony, and... Thank you for coming forward. Take a second to sign in and then introduce yourself.
Bob Hayes, 62 Wilson Hill Road, across the street from this development. I was going to touch on four things that concern my wife and I. If they have to do any blasting, that's a major concern. We would hope that the board would put a provision in that they need to take pictures of all the houses that are... need to take pictures of all the houses that abut the property, pictures of the walls inside, as they did when they put in the mall, and that they would put up a, a bond to cover any potential damage from the blasting. As far as the well goes, that's a concern. People next to us at sixty Wilson Hill Road, Kevin McCarthy's house, have, their wells run dry during twenty-sixteen. So any further impact to wells would significantly impact them. Unfortunately, Kevin's not here to talk about that himself. Um, the drainage that comes down, that little stream that has been mentioned several times, that comes down next to the Foss's house, it goes through a culvert, it goes under the road, and then goes around a hundred feet, and then it just dumps out. DPW Dawn was out there last year, or earlier this year, earlier this year, and they took pictures of it. My concern there is that blasting or bad septic system, heavy fertilizer use, and the other contaminant is gonna just wash right out, right through that culvert, and just empty out and drain right to the, uh, Sohegan River. So it's an issue for the river. I would hope that the board or the appropriate party that has to sign on this would do a site survey to look at the culvert, look at where it dumps, and then walk down to the river. And right now, and it's been this way since September, there's a hundred-and-fifty-foot-wide pond down there behind sixty and fifty-eight Wilson Hill Road. And that just then drains slowly into the river. So there's a real impact there. Something should be done to prevent contamination into the river. And, uh, and that, that's it. I hope you guys would walk that.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Comments or questions?
Can I just, perhaps just explain to the gentleman, and he referenced the outlet mall, the can, the blasting rules that have been drawn up by the town, which were, yes, incorrectly revised to take account of what the, uh, to meet the requirements, the fire department has sole control of it, they will certainly look for, if blasting takes place, it'll have to be done by an approved blasting company. They have to do surveys, pictures and everything of all the properties that might be affected, and that, I mean, whether we'd have to put up a bond quite as big as they did for the outlet mall, but certainly they will be required by the fire department to loc, put a bond, post a bond, because that's what we set up as the new rules as blasting takes place.
Very good, thank you.
But that, I'm, I'm not trying to sort of answer your question, I'm just giving you-
No, no.
...information which is useful to all to understand that the rules are, this, the town, this town did an incredible job bringing the blasting regulations up to date when we did the outlet mall, and those regulations are still in effect and will not be changed.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Alistair. Other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Hayes, for your testimony. Are there any other abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in?
Can I just clarify something?
Sure, just, I know you were here a minute ago, Ms. Tapley, but go through that process.
I've been that way for forty-two years.
I get, I get it.
Um, I think it was more to Mr. Koenig's question, when he was asking Hollis about the water and whether or not the water was gonna come onto Hollis's property. I think what all of us are trying to tell you is this entire section from where the fosses are, all the way over, and John Harris is not here tonight, John Harris owns all the land that abuts this property on the other side, because we sold off the back part of our land and, to him, years ago. All of that land goes up around us and abuts this land here. There's water everywhere, and I think what we're all trying to say is, if you start going into this area, what looks like a tiny little house, what we know is, it only takes this much to make that water go everywhere. And it takes a lot to divert water out of a small space, and I think that's what we were trying to impress upon you. She's telling you, on her area, what happens is her property goes just like this. And hers abuts John and Mary, because they come around to the side of us. Our property, we drain it that way and down the front. It's not drained onto this, because the contour lines don't go that way. It stays on our land, we do not divert onto theirs. She's getting water that's coming from up above her in the back, coming right down and just, like on Niagara Falls. We've got it going this way. It's gonna happen to that land, and now what they're complaining about is, all of the pressure and all of the water that's coming from behind is now draining all toward this seasonal stream, going right over that area and going toward the Foss house. That's, and I, and it doesn't take much to make it happen. I'm not even sure that you need to blast. We didn't have to blast. What I'm telling you is, just to dig the hole, it took three massive trenches. That is how much surface water's up there. I can say that now. All you have to do is drive down the street to see what's happening with Brett Vaughn. I just talked to a guy the other day that was supposed to be digging a hole up there to put a foundation in. They can't right now. It looks like a lake, because the water, where's it coming from? Right up behind the hill, comes right across and just went, psh, down into the bottom. That's, welcome to our rock pile.
Thank you, Mrs. Tapley. Um, are there any others who wish to weigh in? All right, so we'll close the public hearing and invite the applicant back up. Once you get a chance to settle in, I know that you've been taking notes with some of the things that you've heard from the abutters who have testified, and I'll give you an opportunity to address any of those, and then have the planning board ask any follow-up questions.
I'm gonna make it kind of easy, actually. First of all, you know, I've listened attentively to the abutters, and I certainly respect their opinions. I wanna start there. But we haven't done anything out there yet. We haven't done a darn thing, so I want to point out that whatever's happening there now, we have nothing to do with it. That's the first thing I want to point out. Second of all, we understand the requirement that we cannot, we cannot impact our abutters, we cannot create a difficult situation on them. I'm also cognizant of the fact that any septic we build must meet the town and state regulations. I'm also cognizant of the fact that digging a well, we have a right to dig a well. And of course, if it's proven directly that we somehow caused a problem, then I guess it's our problem as well. We don't think that's gonna be a problem. You've already heard that apparently there's a lot of water out there. I propose the following. I'd like to continue this for about a month, maybe an early January meeting. Tim, I don't know when the first meeting after the first of the year is. For a couple of, pardon me?
January eighth.
The eighth. And the reason for it is this. I'm gonna give you an itemized listing. I'd like to, number one, revise the plan a bit to conform to the letter that staff was kind enough to prepare. That's the first thing. I also want to make sure that the soils work that was done, that we get a signed plan with the signatures that you would want from AMBIT Engineering. I understand that. We don't believe, just so you know, I was speaking to Scott, we don't believe we're gonna have to blast at all. Let's start there. And I, I'm not saying absolutely, but right now, we're up in a sandy area. Now granted, it's still some severe soils, but Merrimack, when it revised its soils criteria many, many years ago, Nelson was certainly part of this, uh, there are a number of soils that look pretty good that are still classified as severe, but we don't think we're even going to have to blast. And as Mr. Millens pointed out, if we do, there's a very stringent protocol that we have to meet to take care of that, including blasting surveys, et cetera, et cetera. I don't need to get into it with the board. He is familiar with it as I am. I also want to confirm for you the drainage issues. We don't believe there'll be any impact with what we're proposing. It is a rather large area, and of course, we're not building on ten and a half acres. Nobody builds on ten and a half acres. You build on a small portion of your ten and a half or two or whatever it is acreage. We're not building Yankee Stadium out there. We're building a house. No secret, that's allowed. It's a residential zone. We intend to build a house. I also want to confirm the driveway issues. One of the, the abutters, I think appropriately pointed out that, you know, what's the width, the, do we have a turnaround? I've spoken to Scott about that. To conform to what Dawn has mentioned in her letter, there's a letter from Public Works, and also to confirm with them that the, that they can use the existing driveway. Remind you, it is an existing driveway. It's been there and used successfully for many, many years. I choose not to get into a discussion about somebody else's driveway, somebody else's problems. I also choose not to get into the fact of joint driveways. We have many of them in Merrimack. In fact, this board, this board has advocated, many occasions, joint driveways to reduce road cuts.
Mm-hmm.
And they've worked successfully. And I myself have prepared any number of covenants with sanctions, conditions, penalties, fines, et cetera, call it what you want, to help deal with that. And with all due respect, I'm not familiar with any significant issues of any of the ones that I've dealt with. Now, that isn't to say that if you get some people together that aren't acting neighborly, that things can't happen. But, you know, with all due respect, I do not choose to get into a, a discussion of how joint driveways work. I believe it can work very effectively in this instance, and I'm sure the board can agree with me on that. So, we appreciate these concerns, and I want to try my best to address some of these concerns. So we're not sitting here tonight trying to war game this out. I don't think that's fair to the board, and it's not fair to the abutters. They've brought issues before you that, quite frankly, we haven't, we haven't done anything yet. We haven't dug a hole, we haven't done anything. But I want to respect those thoughts and respect the fact that we don't want to add to it, and I think that's the board's concern, and if I'm mistaken, I'm sure you'll let me know. So I propose that we delay this to a date certain the eighth, so that we can pull some of this together in a more effective manner to try and address the, again, the good thoughts that some of the abutters have brought to us. I think I'll stop talking now. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Michael. Before we take up the question of continuance, I think there may be some discussion the board wishes to have about the proposal or some of the things that the abutters have said, just so that we've all had a chance to exchange the ideas.
Mr. Chairman, could I also add to Attorney Michael's list of things he's gonna do? I would like to invite my colleagues to take a walk up there. It's been indicated to us by several members of the public. I think we owe it to the abutters to spend our, walk our Christmas dinner off by going up there and seeing what, how bad it is. And I would suggest, we don't do it when we've just had a few dry days, but at least a day when, I understand we'll get some from listening to the new, uh, weather forecast tonight, not this week. It's, I think, to the middle of next week before we get anything, but I think we should, at some point between now and January the eighth, take a walk. I will do it myself if nobody else wants to come with me, but I, I think we should do it and make it officially.
Are you proposing a formal site walk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Or that everybody get a chance between now and then to go have a look at the property? What do you want to do?
On a Saturday between now and January the eighth.
The reason I do, the reason I ask that is that is going to require a new notice and new public hearing notice, because that is separate from this hearing.
Right.
All right, I don't make it a formal walk. I would like to invite my colleagues in their spare time to take a walk, if that is the permission of all the abutters. May we drive up your driveways and look at the situation?
Well, hang on a second. I, I get the idea that there's some procedural issues with doing a site walk, but if, if it's the desire of the board to do a proper site walk, then do a proper site walk. Um, if it's the desire of the board to have a look when you get a chance to do it, then let's go that path. But don't make the decision substantively about what we should do based on there having to be some procedure to follow to get there. Get a good look at the application and judge it on its merits. Um, I, I don't know what everybody else thinks about the idea of wanting to go up there and take a look. Nelson, you lived across the street forever, so you probably saw it a million times.
I've seen it from the road. I've never actually walked up that driveway. Never been up there, no, but, uh-
(inaudible).
You didn't invite me, well, I'm not-
Oh, oh, having a Christmas party, even better.
What I wanted to say was, it seems to me, proc, addressing a procedural issue that Tim raised, why could we not extend this meeting to another date certain at this meeting?
You, you could extend this public hearing to a date certain for the planning board to have a public hearing, but not, the site walk under statute has a separate set of notice requirements, has to be noticed separately from the public hearing for the project itself.
It does, okay, that's, that's a rule I'd done-
Could I ask, Tim, how quickly, how, how, if you do it formally, when is the latest date or the first date?
You probably would not be able to get one scheduled, at least for another week and a half, and then if you're assuming that that information is then gonna be utilized by the applicant to do something with it, that doesn't really work with a January eighth continuance date. That's, that's kind of the timing issue I'm trying to resolve. If January eighth is what the board is looking for, or if the board, if the applicant's amenable to going out to the second meeting in January, it's the board's call, not mine.
So, Attorney Michael, if you're giving notice to abutters on this, what do you got about ten, ten abutters that you've gotta give notice to?
It's not actually a, a mailed notice, it's, it's a public notice posting.
Those are even easier, those are forty-eight hours.
They are easier, it's just a matter of timing-wise, the amount of days I need.
Yep. Um, but this is the fourth of December, and we could, somewhere by the sixteenth, eighteenth, um, there's two Saturdays, the fifteenth, the eighth is too close, probably. Um, there's some chances that we could get out there if we wanted to have a look, if everybody's has an interest in doing so. Um, the twenty-ninth between Christmas and New Year's tends to be one where a lot of people may be away, but I'm, I'm gonna be here. I'd certainly come take a look.
I'll be out of town till the twenty-first.
So between now and the twenty-first?
Yes.
But after, you're fine.
Well, what's gonna get the most people out there to take a look? If you're able to go when it's convenient for you, you may have more people that can take a look.
Based purely on my, based purely on my own experience with planning board sight walks, there usually is only one or two of you that actually come. Um, it may make more sense to do individual visits to the property.
Oh, I know what you're saying, 'cause I'm thing one, he's thing two.
I know.
Nelson's three.
I'm four.
Yeah, Lynn gets to them too. Anyway, I'm not trying to dis, everybody gets their, gets to the ones that they're able to get to. I think that there may be the possibility that more of us could go if you could catch as catch can, rather than trying to make it all on one date, and then if you can't make that date, you're out of luck. What's, what are your thoughts on that? We don't have the benefit, if you do that, of having the applicant and the neighbors show us around and make us, make sure that we see-
Well, I think it's a fairly large loss, and there's things that they could point out.
There are things that could be pointed out by both the applicant and the neighbors that if we just wander around, we may not catch.
But surely, given the interest that's been expressed and all the nodding heads I saw just a few minutes ago, if we go up there, I'm sure they're gonna see us turn out with strangers, and if they recognize the faces, they won't call the local constabulary, and we probably should help show us the things. I mean, if we always, if you, if you've got the coffee on, I'll knock on your door anytime.
Well, if we were going there to go, to do a site walk, you start at the driveway and you look at these two lots, and the neighbors that are to the north and south, or the east and west, aren't necessarily gonna see somebody pull into the driveway on this lot and have a look around, so.
I'd like to schedule a site walk.
An actual official-
I would too, but I-
I, I don't think it will prevent any of us from going out there at any other time to look at it and knock on doors and say, "Come, show me," but I'd like to schedule an actual site walk.
So, Tom, you're not available any Saturday except for the twenty-ninth of December?
Well, I get back at about eleven o'clock at night on the twenty-first.
Well, we could do that.
I, the twenty-second or twenty-ninth are our two choices.
Twenty-ninth.
Who likes the twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth.
I need a motion session.
Yeah, we're gonna get to that, but I'm still polling people to see what they like the twenty-second better.
Twenty-ninth.
Does anybody think the twenty-second has to be the day and twenty-ninth is no good?
No, twenty-ninth.
Twenty-nine is better.
Twenty-nine seems to be working fine. Will someone make a motion to conduct a site walk on the twenty-ninth?
Second.
By Lynn, second by Mike or Tom? I didn't hear.
Tom. I said it.
Tom said it. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
What time?
One opposed. Any abstaining?
What time?
Typically, we do them at nine o'clock, but we were trying to coordinate with you, so tell me what works, and we'll see what works with us, guys.
You run it at nine o'clock.
Uh, Dan is opposed. Six zero, six one zero to have the site walk.
On the twenty-ninth.
On the twenty-ninth. Does nine o'clock work?
Yeah, just set a time, please.
Okay. Uh, planning board members, nine o'clock?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, nine o'clock on the twenty-ninth.
Assuming there's no snow in the driveway.
Hopefully.
What's that?
Assuming there's no snow in my driveway.
Uh, for the benefit of the public who's here, that site walk is considered a public meeting, and so just like us, you can come and be a part of it too. Um, there are some ground rules for sight walks, because we don't have the benefit of the television cameras and the microphones and the minute takers, that generally speaking, what we do is look around and point out features, but we don't get into the debate about what we see or what it means until we come back here and do it in front of the public record.
But we will, we will make a note of the names. If you guys appear at the meet, at the site walk-
You'll be in the minute.
-you'll be on the, on the list of, we record that you've been there and joined us.
Yeah. Um, so my-
Go ahead.
Attorney Michael, is there a gathering point where six or eight or ten cars could park without jamming up the world out here?
On the driveway.
On the driveway.
Part of the-
I know that- I know that you're raising your hand, but the public hearing is closed, so I can't take more public testimony. Give some thoughts?
There's, I think...
There's a driveway at the top, it's pretty big.
You can drive up to the top.
Yeah, there's plenty of room down there on the side of the road.
On the side of the road, or, okay.
There's room, room at the top. I don't, I don't think you'll have trouble getting up there. Yeah, just drive up the driveway.
Okay.
Can I just add one thing?
What's that?
Can I just add one thing? Would we be able to extend an invitation to Dawn Tamala for this meeting? I know she may not be available, but if, it could be extended invitation to Dawn.
Dawn had, well, I can do that. Dawn has reviewed this project and does not have any drainage concerns associated with this project, given the size and nature of a single-family home development on a frontage subdivision. She has, any concerns about drainage, she said, are insignificant, given the size of the watershed being dealt with here.
Right, but, and she's addressed the, the issues with regards to the culvert in the road.
She actually told me today that she has looked at the photos of the culvert, the culvert is in good shape, she has no concerns about that particular culvert.
Okay. Nevertheless, if it's the will of the board to extend an invitation, that's certainly something we're...
Yeah, please do.
It's a public meeting, yes, come on.
If she chooses.
Well, she's, yeah.
And able, I mean, everybody's assuming that somebody's available on the twenty-ninth and nine o'clock in the morning willing to do it. Okay.
Is the eighth still good for you, Greg, for the next public hearing?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like that, please.
Can I therefore make a motion that we...
Hang on a second. I don't know if we're done with any questions or comments or anything. So, the, the abutters had talked about, mostly about the water. You mentioned blasting, you mentioned you have the right to do a well. I'm just trying to make sure we've covered all of the things that the abutters had brought up and made sure that we've mentioned. As I'm looking at the contours and looking at the water flow, I kind of concur with some of the comments we heard from Counselor Koenig and others, that it appears that the water is flowing to the southeast on this lot, but can you get some confirmation of which way the water is flowing?
One of my points was confirming the drainage issues. That was one of my points to the board a few minutes ago, Mr. Chairman.
Understood. Thank you very much for that.
It's quite all right.
I just want to make sure that we haven't left anything on the table that we can catch and address between...
There is, the sidewalk.
Sidewalk. The neighbors certainly haven't spoken to the sidewalk or addressed it. I'm inclined to grant the relief by determining that a sidewalk waiver is not necessary on a two-lot subdivision like this.
I'll agree with that.
I just need a consensus on that.
Do you want a consensus, or do you want a motion?
Consensus for this, too.
Consensus, okay.
Does anyone disagree that...
I would agree that with no other sidewalks, none as needed as a part of this approval.
Consensus of the board that is not required under the section of the ordinance, the regulations that allow it.
All right, so that question is addressed for you, we don't have to take that one up when we meet again. Other comments or questions about this proposal? Okay, thank you, and sorry for slowing you down.
It's all right, so, Mr. Chairman, don't worry. I make a motion that we can continue this, this matter till January the eighth at 7:00 PM in this room with no further notice to abutters.
Thank you.
Motion in a second.
Thank you, Attorney Michael.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero to continue.
Thank you, folks, for all you've said, too.
Thank you. Item four on our agenda is LaMontaigne Builders, Inc. as the applicant, and estate of John C. Foster Jr. as the owner, and because of the extraordinary number of lot numbers there, I will, unless there's an objection, report that it's read into the record as printed in the agenda.
Good thinking.
And with that, the applicant's request, withdrawn it, which requires no action on our part to acknowledge, and so there was no discussion on item number four.
Wonderful.
Item number five on our agenda is Edgbrook Heights LLC as the applicant, and Edgbrook Heights LLC, Wigston Properties LLC, and Q. Peter Nash 1987 Revocable Trust I as the owners. Continued review for consideration of final approval of a conditional site, conditional use permit to permit a future mixed-use development consisting of retail, commercial, multifamily, residential, and elderly housing. The parcels are located at 13955 and two unnumbered parcels off Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial, Park for Conservation, and Flood Hazard Conservation Districts. Tax map one E, Lot 41, 42, map two E, Lot 62, 7, and 9, and this is continued from our November 13, 2018, meeting. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Nothing specific, just a reminder to the board, this is a resubmission of a previously granted conditionally, conditional use permit that was originally approved back in 2004 by this planning board, due to various factors, including a lawsuit and other things that have worked their way through the process. After a couple of continuances for the approval, excuse me, extensions for the approval, has since lapsed, and now the applicant is back before the board with a modified proposal, taking into consideration items from a settlement agreement with the abutting property owners. The property is, the project is essentially the same as what was proposed back in 2014 in terms of number of units of multifamily residential. The biggest change is the number of buildings proposed, three versus five in the original project, and the assisted living facility is now proposed to be a elderly housing unit rather than assisted living. In the grand scheme of things, the impacts of this particular project are essentially the same as what they were in 2014 when the board granted conditional approval. There has not been any new submissions since you last saw this on November 13th. I think one of the concerns, based on my read of the minutes and brief viewing of the video of the meeting, was that there were some issues with the electronic submission that was given to the board prior to that meeting, and people not being able to open it and feel that they didn't have an opportunity to really read through the entire application, which we now have all received a hard copy of in the mail this past weekend. Staff recommendation remains the same, that in my memo, which I apologize is lengthy, but I wanted to make sure we covered all the requirements of the conditional use permit process. We are recommending conditional approval of the project. The biggest issue that I see as outstanding is a discussion of how to do the phasing of the project. That really is the one thing that is also proposed differently than 2014. When this was approved in 2014, it was approved with a requirement that a commercial component be part of the first phase in addition to the residential. In subsequent conditional use permits for mixed-use development, the board has changed how they've done that. In the Flatley project, you allowed four out of five residential buildings to be in the first phase, and in the Monahan project, you've allowed no specific requirement as to what uses are in each phase, as long as they're fiscally positive, tax positive to the community. I think that, given the evolution of the board on phasing, that probably makes sense to have some modification from what was approved in 2014. I think it's probably safe to say that my recommendation would be some sort of hybrid between what you did with Monahan and what you did with Flatley.
Thank you, Tim, for the very well-done introduction with all of the details, and I know board members, you may remember that at our last meeting, we had some significant discussion with this applicant, and as Tim mentioned, we paused because we had all been supplied with an electronic package, and some folks just didn't find that to be enough information or clear enough to be able to digest it all, so we wanted to pause and have a chance to get that with folks. There has been an introduction by the applicant before, we'll sort of have them do it again for us here tonight, and, and kind of get into some of the questions you may have now that you've had a chance to read it. I want to sort of begin with just a general comment that, as I looked through my application, there was a little bit of misplacement of where things were in reference to what the tabs on the Table of Contents said, and I want to make sure that we ultimately get some of that stuff cleared up. I have, none of, nowhere in my package is the master plan for the whole site, the one that's on your board over there. The tab that indicates that I should expect to find it there seems to be the site plan for the residential piece, and so ultimately, I want to get that cleared up and make sure everything kind of flows through your document the way that the Table of Contents says that it should. Obviously, that's a very technical, a minor technical issue, just to get the copies straightened out.
As a, as an update, and just to clarify for the board, because I anticipated this would come up, if you go under the recommendations for conditions, number five, which is the planning staff technical comments, that specific issue regarding the master site development plans, item G, and the other things about the tabs and some of the clarifications on typos are also included in those parts of condition number five in the recommendations.
Okay.
Is there a copy of your letter in there?
Thank you, Tim. We had asked everybody to bring it from last week. I don't have specifically extra copies, but if need be, I can run downstairs and make a bunch.
I don't have mine, but I'm familiar with what was in it from before, but if you guys need one, let's make sure we get one.
I don't have it, I didn't get it, and I was having trouble using my computer to get at it, and so I said that last time, and I got this book this weekend, which didn't give me much time to go through it, being relatively busy, so I'm not really much better off than I was last meeting, as far as having had a chance to review this material.
Well, let's at least make sure that we've got a copy of the staff memo. Let's take a little five-minute recess, and Tim, you want to get some copies for me? All right, so we'll take a five-minute recess and gather up in a few minutes, and I'm going to take advantage of that five. advantage of that five.
Okay, let's reconvene the meeting. Thank you, Tim, for getting us our copies. I know that doesn't necessarily mean that Tom's instantly had a chance to absorb quite a bit of memo here.
Especially since it's an 11-page memo.
Yeah. The organization of the staff memo when it comes to a CUP leads you through the elements that are outlined in our ordinance that are required, and what the staff's opinion is in terms of what's been met on those. And so, beginning at the top of page three, you see items that are numbered in the left column, and the staff's interpretation with them. I know that I don't want to necessarily have you guys go through all of that stuff in detail, but give us a general presentation overview of the project and kind of set the stage. Some of our planning board members weren't here at our last meeting and didn't get the benefit of that.
Sure. Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
You've got to compete with Tom, too, who did a great presentation last time. He actually got compliments for his presentation.
Yes, oh, absolutely. I think you should, um, Tim Zajak. Oh, absolutely, bro. All his presentations.
I never got any positive recommendations.
That's why Tom's not here.
Have you done his Christmas review?
Let them proceed.
All right.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first off, my name is Jim Petropolis. I am the president of Hayner Swanson, and sitting here tonight pinch-hitting for Tom because at 4:00 PM today, he became a father for the first time. So, congrats to my good friend and colleague. With me tonight is our project attorney, Attorney Brad Westgate. The principals of Edgburg Heights LLC, Kevin Slattery and Bernie Plant are with us. We brought our traffic engineer, Steve Purnau, here. And we also brought Bill Lures, a commercial real estate broker. And Bill may have a few words to say during our very brief presentation. I'd like to start off by just apologizing for the mix-up in the content of the book. And I'm not sure the mix-up in communication between staff and the board was anything we had to do with, but we're here tonight.
Understood.
What I'm going to try to do is host a couple things, really, just to give you that overview. I think, Mr. Ricker, I know Ms. Christensen and Mr. Redding, I think were not here at the November 13th. I'm going to give a quick overview of the project. I'm going to just touch upon a couple quick items. And I think Attorney Westgate has a few items to talk about as well. And hopefully, it's all with the goal of cleaning up some of the issues that were discussed at the last meeting. And then we'll kind of circle back to Tim's memo. As read into the record, we are seeking a conditional use permit for proposed Edgburg Heights mixed-use development. As overview, this particular site, and I went to the black-and-white drawing versus the colored, because it is the definitive conditional use plan. But this is a 35-acre piece of property, really in the southeast corner of Merrimack. I'm sure many of you are familiar with it. But Daniel Webster Highway borders the site to the north. We have the former Nashua Corp. and now NanoCom facility also here to the north, railroad to the east, and then New Hampshire DOT land that they took as part of the circumstantial way back when to the south. As the chairman mentioned a few minutes ago, back in 2000, and I think it was, Tim, I'm sorry, 2013, 2014, we submitted an application, received the conditionals for a very similar project. And that project consists of a private road, private road network. It consists of three multifamily buildings totaling 156 units with a clubhouse. It includes 76 units of an age-restricted housing project. I believe 14,000 square feet of commercial on this lot here, and then, conceptually, a commercial space here, as well as a commercial space, gas, mini-market here. And the commercial lots are really to show, conceptually, what could be developed on that property. As we have stated on numerous occasions, they will be developed based on market conditions. As Tim also mentioned, because of a lawsuit with the property to the north and varying conditions, we find ourselves back here some four years later, kind of ready to go. But we're ready to go back through the conditional use process. Again, we met before you in greater detail on November 13th. And at that time, the presentation focused in on a lot of those subtle differences Tim did in his fine presentation between our plan and the 2014 approval. In reading the notes since the last meeting, it indicated that the reason we're back here tonight, to give the board a chance to kind of look at this combined package of information in the CUP, it includes some traffic information, it includes plans, it includes architecturals, it includes fiscal information as well. And that's because a CUP is different than a site plan, that's some of the different application material that you require. We felt, as a team, that there were really two elements of the CUP that were discussed last week that probably need to get touched upon in a little bit greater detail here this evening. The buffering along the northerly property line with our buffer to the north was one of the issues we're going to talk about. And then, as Tim alluded to, project phasing. With regarding that buffer to the north, as I think you know, the project entered into what became a four-year settlement agreement between this property and the property to the north. And a lot of that settlement agreement discussed various development scenarios, and it discussed buffering, fencing, and other project elements. During the last meeting, Attorney Westgate discussed some of those scenarios. And one had to do with buffering, really along the commercial lots in close proximity to the NanoCom property. A few of the board members had concerns with a permanent fence between lots A and B, our two commercial lots. However, under the settlement agreement, we do not need to build any fence in that location. In fact, if we construct fencing, which our client intends to do as part of the first phase, along a corner of the railroad track, fencing and berm along the property line, fencing and berm along this property line, that meets the condition of the settlement agreement. So our testimony tonight, Mr. Chairman, is that when we come forth, hopefully, with a detailed site plan for the first phase, the residential phase, in that detailed site plan will be the elements of a buffering along that, as I have just highlighted. The second portion is the phasing portion, and that was discussed at the meeting. Our proposal tonight, on the plan, would be comprised of the entire phase. One would be the residential piece, the three buildings, the clubhouse, and the age-restricted. Also included would be, of course, the infrastructure to support that, the sewer extension, the private road system, the stormwater, the landscaping, the lighting. All those elements would be part of Phase One. Subsequent phases in the future, of course, would be the commercial development of these three lots, again, as the market dictates. At that meeting in November, we discussed the reason was because the benefits of not having a speculative commercial development as part of the first phase, we wanted to emphasize that a better project would be to wait and see and attract a tenant who wanted to be there, instead of building a speculative building. And we've asked Bill Lures, a longtime commercial real estate broker in the greater Nashua area, to talk a little bit more in detail about that, about why not building a building, just for the sake of building a building, would be detrimental to what we're trying to accomplish. Lastly, I just wanted to mention that in the fiscal report, it worth noting that this first phase of the project, the residential phase, has a net positive fiscal impact to the town of over $400,000 per year. And that does not include any of the three commercial lots. So we have a positive net fiscal impact to the town with just the residential. So my, again, setting up the presentation for this evening, my testimony is that I believe we comply with the criteria of the conditional use permit. I think Tim has done a wonderful job in the staff report of outlining that. I will not go into detail, Mr. Chairman, unless you need to ask a specific question about it. But Tim's report and his findings, we are in agreement with those findings, and we support his report. Of course, again, this does not give us any approvals to go ahead with construction. We would need to come back in with formal land plans and formal detailed site plans, looking at all the elements of sidewalk, of lighting, of landscaping, of stormwater. And our first piece would be the residential piece. So we're seeking your CUP approval tonight. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Brad. But again, I'm available to answer any engineering questions. I know Mr. Lures wants to say a few things. And I think I mentioned Mr. Purnau's here, if there's any traffic questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I'm Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer with Wyner Bennett and Nashua, representing the applicants. Jim has done a nice summary of the state of the application and the presentation that was done by Tom Zajak and now Jim tonight. I'm going to be also very brief, and then turn it over to Bill Lures to discuss the phasing concept a little bit, and sort of the rationale behind what we had proposed for phasing in the first place. As Jim mentioned, the concept now would be that there would be no, excuse me, that the fencing that would be really detailed in the site plan, frankly, as part of the whole buffering requirement, will be around Lot A with fence and berm, then down Lot D to the railroad tracks, and then along the railroad tracks pursuant to the settlement agreement. And the settlement agreement allows us to do it in that fashion. Relative to the phasing issue, as you know, we contemplate the first phase of the project to be the three residential multifamily buildings, the age-restricted building, probably a 55 and older community in all likelihood, and then all the necessary infrastructure, which would include the private road, water, sewer, infrastructure, and the like, all to be detailed on a site plan that has been applied for, and hopefully will be heard at your January 8th meeting.
Clubhouse, too?
You didn't mention the clubhouse, but I assume--
Oh, pardon me, and the clubhouse, yes. And that's part of it as well, sorry. And you may recall that part of our rationale for phasing it in this fashion was that it seemed to us that the idea of building some commercial structure on a speculation basis simply wasn't where the market's at today. And Mr. Lures knows that far better than I, and will talk about those concepts. Also, we thought that having a site that has activity, showing great vitality in the development of the first phase, has a much greater chance of attracting viable and not just marginal commercial users who have a specific goal in mind in their particular commercial use, their build-to-suit approach. So that was fundamental rationale that we thought made sense. And as Jim also mentioned, the first phase is fiscally positive. It runs in the black on a tax revenue basis versus cost basis, as the fiscal impact study very favorably details. In fact, it's interesting, it's of the three phases, it runs in the black better than the other two. The conditional use permit plan presently contemplates a second and third phase that detail particular lots. Actually, what we would propose, Mr. Chairman, is that the second phase be whatever the first use on the lots outside of Lot D, that is, outside of the residential lot, be presented. So on a build-to-suit basis, whatever that comes out of the marketplace and presents itself to us, that would be the second phase. It need not be wedded to either Lot A, Lot B, or Lot C in particular, but could be any one of those lots, depending upon what's the first sensible, logical, build-to-suit proposal. If I may, Mr. Chairman, have Mr. Lures come up and try to explain better than I--
Please do. Please make the presentation as you feel appropriate.
As he comes up, just along those lines of the phasing, if the board were amenable to doing that in that fashion, I would certainly recommend that because of the way that the CUP process contemplates connectivity, that any second phase include connection, both vehicular and pedestrian, to whatever that second phase happens to be, regardless of which lot it happens to be on.
Thank you, Tim, for that reminder of that.
Mr. Lures?
Yes, please, first or second, or whenever you're convenient. But if you want to do it now, go ahead.
My name is Bill Lures. I am the president and principal of Tamposi Nash Real Estate. It's a commercial real estate brokerage and development consulting firm in Nashua, in the greater Nashua area. I'm going to make my points rather brief. I think there's some very important, salient points about what, in fact, Edgburg Heights is, which is a mixed-use development. And a mixed-use development, just by its definition, needs to be integrated and to take all of its uses and have some sort of synergy and opportunity to be responsive, not only to just one part of the development, but rather all facets of the development. And to that end, I think Attorney Westgate's point and Tim's point relative to whatever the next phase is, that this phase has pedestrian and vehicular integration as well. I'm here to talk to you about how a mixed-use development maximizes the opportunity and is successful. And what drives that, frankly, is to be responsive, whether that's in the design of residential and Phase One, which frankly, I have no input into, because that's not what I do. I'm a commercial real estate broker and development management. And I've been doing it for, as I tell people to, about 40 years.
Am I a bit closer to you?
Sure. So what I'd like to touch on are points relative to what is being proposed for the CUP, which is that Phase Two essentially be a phase that is augmenting an enhancement of a mixed-use development. And that means that that phase is going to be dictated, in large part, by the marketplace. If I can digress for a very short time, I've been doing this a long time, and it's fascinating to see even in, say, an industrial marketplace, when buildings were built by Sam Tamposi and Jerry Nash, they put buildings up like they were punching, you know, Christmas cookies out of their development arm, and they would build industrial buildings with 12-foot ceilings, 14-foot ceilings. Now, typically, any development in that segment of the marketplace is 18, just to get introduced into the market. 22 is becoming much more prevalent. And, you know, it goes way up, given the technology of that. And that's true and applicable to retail, to office, to industrial. And "commercial" is a sort of a catchphrase, but it encompasses anything, frankly, other than residential in many ways. So, the market in real estate in general, in Merrimack, as well as Nashua, is very competitive. I mean, right now, I was actually quite surprised, Merrimack has over 175,000 square feet of available office space. Merrimack has 130,000 square feet of available industrial space, and about 40,000 square feet of what is conventionally called retail space. That's a lot of opportunity for a company to come in and pick and choose. Why is it important to be responsive? Because you're competing with a very, very defined marketplace. And like anything else, if you can respond to the market in a timely and build-to-suit responsive way, you're going to be able to capture and maximize the success of what you're trying to develop. On a very ordinary basis, a speculative building-- On a very ordinary basis, a speculative building is by nature, the cookie's been cut, and the Christmas tree is not going to be a star. It's going to be a Christmas tree. And it's baked, it's done, you're not going to change that Christmas tree into a star. I'm using the Christmas analogy because it's close to our stomachs, I mean, our hearts. So--
Yeah, I got it.
At any rate, so that can extend to many things. I think one of the great and exciting opportunities about this is that the residential is in and of itself diversified, and it's going to have a whole variety of residents, ages, and a demographic that's going to be brought to that site, which I think any opportunity for a town to bring in that diversity is terrific. And I think if you can support that and encourage that diversity and support it by way of a mixed-use development. So flexibility, build-to-suit is the flexibility. I think existing inventory is indicative of, you want space, you're not going to have a problem finding space in the marketplace. Finding the space that's right for you as a user has always been, in my experience, essentially what you try to minimize are compromises by prospective tenants. And there are always compromises, unless, of course, you're building to suit. You know, a medical use has a huge demand on drainage, on multiple areas that need to have specific features that address medical use. If you build a speculative building, you have a five-inch concrete floor, that you're going to start jackhammering to put in 12 sinks. You look at a commercial, retail basis, they are becoming much more market-driven in terms of the presentation to the marketplace. And speculative buildings can't address the nuances of that marketplace. So what I'm suggesting, and I think strongly would like to make the point, is that flexible timing, design, and responsiveness to prospective tenants is what a mixed-use development is affording and going to drive the success of that. In order to do that, you need to basically roll out a piece of paper and the ownership, and I don't mean that in its literal sense necessarily, the ownership of a user to have the opportunity and to sit down with a space planner or an architect and say, okay, this is what my vision for my business is, okay? I don't want to take the suit off the rack and hem the pants and open my business in a suit that sort of fits, but not really. And the success of a business is very driven by the fact that they have their own vision as a business. We don't know what businesses are going to come for this mixed use, and the market's going to dictate that. If the market is told what they're supposed to be doing in their space, in terms of configuration, in terms of design, et cetera, you are then into the availability of what the market currently has, which is a fair amount of space. So I think it's very, very important that these developers be allowed to do what the market is asking them to do. And to that end, my experience in the many years is, is that the best way to do that is to tell a prospective tenant, don't worry about the shape, the design, the configuration, the clear height, where the plumbing is, et cetera. You can say to them, come and tell us what you want your business to be operating around. As a consumer, on any front, I like that choice, okay? And that's what I think that my experience has supported that mindset and that flexibility. And that's what I think what's being proposed in the conditional use permit, is indeed to be allowed to be responsive. It's to be allowed to have an integrated project and not a project that's basically trying to fit itself into a marketplace. Let the marketplace define these phases. And I think, as Attorney Westgate said, the development of the primary, the residential and the 55 and older, or whatever, however that's going to be done, is going to be getting a lot of attention visually and getting a lot of attention and excitement. The population who are going to be in there is going to be making demands for services that they're going to want. And if you're a developer and you can say to, from the residential forward, hey, I have these residential developments, but by the way, upfront, we are going to be sensitive to your needs, residents, as to what your needs are going to be in terms of what is going to make you want to buy or lease the residential component of this. And that's essentially what they're asking of the board, is to please give them the opportunity to respond to the market. It's all going to be in a context of what you folks say is permissible in terms of all of what goes into a development. But their responsiveness is going to drive the success and, in a word, have an integrated, mixed-use development.
Thank you, Mr. Lures, for your presentation. Does any member of the board have questions or comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk for a minute about some of the things that you're talking about. What I think they're coming here to talk to us about with the CUP or mixed-use development is to take a piece of industrial land in Merrimack and convert it into essentially residential land with some small amount, not 100,000 square feet, but a very small amount set aside for potential future commercial retail use. And so I'm seeing one of the few pieces of land in Merrimack that's still available to be built to suit for industrial or heavy commercial or something like that, being taken away and turned into a huge residential project with a future dream of maybe some commercial or industrial to go along with it, or retail. And while that's the definition of a mixed use, we're actually talking about converting a big piece of highly usable, but not used right now, I understand that. I mean, some people will say, nobody's there now, so it's not bringing any money into the town. But it also limits our future development capabilities. And my biggest fear is we're going to find we have this big residential development, and because there's space, like you said, all over town, that's not being utilized, that's in the same sort of sizes as what you're talking about here. I mean, you're talking about relatively small retail, I think, in here, or commercial space. You're not talking about 100,000-square-foot spaces or something like that. So where I would understand they would need build-to-suit, they would really want to get it built the way they wanted it, Maquette or Fidelity or something like that. So I guess I'm just having a hard time believing that this, let us build the residences here on this remaining piece of industrial or commercial property, and maybe in the future we'll build something else because somebody might decide they want it in the future. It's too much of a pipe dream out there for me. When we talked about mixed uses, I wanted to see a mixed-use plan put together and brought forward, and what I'm seeing is a plan of, let's build residences, and in the future, we might come up with some commercial that we can put in there.
Well, I would, and your point is well-taken, but I think in all respect, to let components of a mixed-use development lay fallow is not the objective of this developer or any developer.
Never is, though.
Of course. So I don't think it's quite so tenuous that maybe this front or these other, you know, A, B, and C are going to be, at some point perhaps, developed. Does not drive any income to this developer unless they have somebody out there making a very, very strong pitch to the marketplace to come look at us. We want, and I'm not part of this development, we being the developer, I'm saying, want to develop. And I would expect that the town, to, as a culmination of a mixed-use development, wants it all developed. In all respect, to articulate that development now and to make that development's phases defined rigidly as to what it's going to be, is in fact, I think, a recipe to, in fact, have that lay there for quite a while, because the next person coming in could go up the street to a number of commercial and office and the like and just go into it. So I think that, in fact, this developer is going to be finely tuning its marketing in a responsive way to the Phase One of this project. The only other point to address, to your question and your point, is industrial development is important for any town to have, and if there's a restriction of available land for industrial development, I don't think that necessarily is going to be to the detriment of the town. If you look at the development that has taken place industrially, most of that development right now has been around the Londonderry Manchester Airport. Merrimack could not, cannot, Nashua could not, cannot respond to FW Webb building a million square feet at the Londonderry Manchester Airport.
I'll respectfully disagree. I actually had Webb up on a purchase and sale that expired before they decided to go to Londonderry.
Okay, fair point. Was it Sam Audley's piece?
Yes, well, no, it wasn't Sam Audley's. He was behind St. Cobain.
Okay, okay. So there's aspects of development industrially that either you can or can't respond to because of your available land. And I appreciate your point, but I'm not so sure a mixed-use development of residential and subsequent other phases is going to be any less an opportunity for the town of Merrimack to have ratables and bring business to the town.
Mr. Lures, I understand what you're saying with that, and I understand the needs of the market, and clients are going to have some desire to come forward with what they think fits what their needs are. But the applicant's the one that chose this form of development, conditional use permit, master-planned, mixed-use. If you want to propose something else, then there's a process for that. And if you want to have, you know, retail and a couple of lots that are residential and a couple of lots that sit next to it that are for whatever the future may hold, there's a different path for that. But what you chose was to come down the path of CUP, which is this thing where they're all integrated, just as you began your presentation. They all have some synergies to them. Leaving it to what the market holds, I'm sympathetic, and, you know, push comes to shove, I think I'd probably vote with you, but I'm also sympathetic with the idea that we don't know what the market holds. And you've got these, like, these two commercial buildings, 7,200 square feet in the middle, and if you came back to me in a year and says, hey, we've got this auto repair business that wants to go in there and sell used cars out of one building and fix cars in the other, and, you know, we'll design them so they all look alike, I'd be floored. I mean, it would be the wrong thing to put in the middle of residential, but the market says that somebody wants it, and so you'd come here and you'd present that to me, and you'd hope that I approved it. And sort of leaving it up to the market, when you've got a concept that's supposed to be master-planned and integrated, is a really difficult thing for us to get past.
You're absolutely right, but the decision by the developer to have a vision of what the overall project's going to be, and that's not my decision, but the overall development is going to want to enhance the development in its entirety. And I'm not so sure a used car lot is the best and highest use that any developer would want, sitting in front of brand-new residential and development of that sort. So I think there is some, I wouldn't use the word randomness, but the market doesn't necessarily dictate. It's the developer who chooses to accept what the market is bringing to them. What I'm trying to make the point in terms of the flexibility and the build-to-suit is the opportunity to say, yes, I think that would be a good integration of this project, or no, I'm sorry, I don't think a particular use is going to be appropriate for what the developer, I use this word, you know, not in any highfalutin way, what the vision for the developer is for the overall project. So a developer still has the discretion to say no to the market. What you don't want to do is to have the market say no to you. And that's the thrust of what I'm trying to say.
Just a couple of thoughts, if I may, too, Mr. Chairman. I think, again, in shorthand, one of the points we're making is that the build-to-suit approach has a greater probability of putting the commercial use into the complex quicker than the spec building approach does. And I know that at our last meeting, I think that sentiment was thought of a couple of the board members, which is, there's no real good purpose in having a spec building sit and simply not be utilized. It's just another piece of inventory on the market that's not being filled. And our sense is, as Bill has detailed, the build-to-suit approach has a greater chance of not letting that dilemma occur. Couple other thoughts. I think this property, for several decades, but Mr. Lures will know better than I, had been marketed effectively industrially or commercially, and it just never attracted the ultimate user that, you know, would have made it viable today, and we wouldn't be sitting here had that been the case. Another point is that, yes, it's true, this is industrial land that will not necessarily have a full-blown industrial component to it because of the residential piece, as Counselor Conick says. But we also need to remember that only a few parcels in Merrimack fit the criteria to be a conditional use permit parcel, and they are essentially the large parcels, some of which are in industrial land, they're on the main thoroughfares. So the ordinance defines these as the potential CUP parcels, not the developer coming in and simply theorizing that they were CUP parcels. The ordinance contemplates this type of parcel as a CUP parcel, and happens to be zoned industrially.
Well, I'd add to that a little bit. It did take a little bit of relief from the zoning board to get you over that hump.
True, it did.
That said, the question about whether it's industrial or whether it's not industrial has, to some degree, been addressed by the zoning board, which granted you the relief that said this conditional use process is appropriate for this site. So that's why we're here, considering it, giving you a fair shake at it, so.
Thank you. Yes, you're right. We obviously did get the acreage variance, which was our primary one that we needed.
Other comments or questions from members of the board? Lynn?
I think one of the benefits that the town is looking for in commercial, in mixed use, is almost to have a self-contained property, where you have residential, you have commercial, you have retail, something where it's walkability. And when you come in and say, I'm going to build the residential, and we have other parcels in town that are defined as mixed use, where they've built just the residential, and they're coming back to us now and saying, you know, we can't rent the commercial, we can't build the commercial, there's no benefit to the commercial, we want to convert the commercial space that we designated to residential. That defeats the mixed use.
Just to clarify, those are--
Those are old PRDs, not mixed-use conditional use permits, so there's a little bit of a difference.
I understand, but the concept is the same, and that's why, sitting here saying, well, we've got this grandiose idea of building this mixed use, and we're going to have residential here, and we're going to have this little piece of commercial, we don't know what it's going to be, but it's going to be designated, but it's going to be residential. That's not my vision of what mixed use is. Because I don't want you coming to me in two years saying, you know, we had this idea that we'd build this commercial, and it's going to come, it's going to come, but it doesn't come, and we've got it, and we have no income, and so we want to turn this into residential as well. I'm not interested in that. So what you're proposing doesn't cut it with me. So what you're proposing doesn't cut it with me. I'm sorry.
So other comments or questions? As I mentioned, as I was going through some of my other answers, and we had talked about this in the past, what we've done with some of the other parcels that have come with conditional use permits is really focus on the question about having the property be a net positive from a tax basis. And I'm convinced that that's a reasonable approach to doing some of these things as long as we've made it clear that the sites that are supposed to be commercial are not going to be subject to some relief later on to change them to something else. I understand that the market may not be there for the commercial at the moment and we've got a few approved parcels around that are competing with you for the same commercial customers right now with two other CUPs that are live and available in town. And so I think that if I was inclined to make a decision on this, I would phase it the way that you've proposed it with some very clear conditions that say that the commercial isn't going to be available to, for relief to be residential in the future. It's going to be what you said it was going to be in the CUP. However, I don't think that, I don't hear that consensus from my colleagues. It seems like they're inclined to want to see some commercial development as a part of the first phase, sort of let them kind of pick up and follow up on that individually based on what their opinion is. I think when you talk about letting the market dictate or build-to-suit, you still end up a bit limited here because of the size of the parcel and what's nearby and how much parking spaces you have, how much square footage you have, what kind of things fit in with residential. You know, you're already paring the market down. And to say that, you know, building a building, and I'm not even certain that I'm looking for a spec building because a spec building isn't a use at all, occupy it with something. Get, go get a client, market it. And if it's tough to market, figure out what the cost-benefit analysis is of having the residential versus whatever kind of deal you got to make with somebody to get them to come in there for the commercial. That's what a master planned community does. You look at it and you say, well, I need this other piece, so I'm going to have to find somebody that is willing to come in here and do it.
For those that aren't comfortable with just doing it on a fiscal impact basis, as Bob seems to be comfortable with and as we did in a different fashion with Monahan, is there an approach similar to Flatley where they're building only residential in their first phase, but there's a portion of that residential that is tied to development of a commercial piece?
Well, speaking for myself, I can go along with the point Bob has made. I can concede, as long as the thing is tax positive, I'd like to see them go along with it. My only concern is if you look at the plan, the proposed four-story, 76-unit restricted-age housing and the car park that goes with it could get in the way of somebody coming forward and wanting to do something that is a little more adventurous than a gas station and a couple of attorney's offices. No disrespect. I would, I don't like that building on the, just off the, on the sort of main drag because I think you're restricting...
The 20,000 square foot.
Yeah, you really are driving the commercial, retail, or whatever you like to call it, to be little tin pot businesses. I'm not being rude, I'm just saying that if somebody came in with a big, you know, I don't mean any major warehouse company like Amazon, but if somebody came in with a great opportunity, given that the highway is supposed to be improved, I think you're totally constricting what you could put in that commercial space. In principle, I go along with the concept you've come up with. I just don't like that layout because you are being too restrictive on any commercial possible client who turns up.
Potentially so, but remember the buildings that are shown on the plan for A, B, and C are concepts only and they could come back with something that says no gas station, that's going to be a 4,000-foot restaurant.
If, correct me if I'm wrong, Al, so you're talking about where the assisted living is proposed on this plan.
Yeah, I don't like where that...
Having, basically flipping that with Lot C where they show commercial there because you'd want to have the commercial have that visibility.
That's exactly what I want. I don't like, I mean, I think in one of the previous iterations of things, you did have that. You had the assisted living or whatever you like to call it was the, you know, the far side of the roundabout.
Lot C.
Which is Lot C, yeah. Now, if you put the assisted living and possibly the clubhouse into C, then I'll go along with your plans, but I don't like them the way you've got it there. I'm all for your doing some commercial, doing residential to get it going. I understand everything you've said, but I don't like that plan.
So other comments or questions? Nelson?
It's a slightly different subject, but I've been waiting for an opportunity to just bring this to the board's attention. I personally, right now, have some issues with the fiscal analysis that was done. In the latest report, what was put in here for income versus what's in here for uses, they use different businesses as models and it doesn't track and they used a lot of out-of-town residential and out-of-town age-restricted places as opposed to in-town. And then they went and talked to our police department to get the number of calls and that sort of thing. So I'm having some issues with that. I just wanted to put that on the table. It probably doesn't directly affect what we're doing right now, but...
If I could respond to that, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, well, first, Nelson, can you point a little bit more specifically what it is that you're, which pages or tables you're looking at that show?
The pages aren't numbered, so I'll have to go to my tab section.
Some of them are numbered.
The pages are numbered from here, Jim. He's referring.
I'm on page, if I go first of all to, if we've got this big...
Yeah, yeah.
Page seven, if we go to page seven.
Of tab eight?
And then you go...
It's in tab eight, page seven.
Which tab?
Tab eight, page seven.
It's tab eight, page seven. Okay?
Yeah.
We see some use groups here. This was the estimate of revenues that would come in from these different uses based on their assessed valuations. They took a certain, for instance, under gas stations, they took Peachtree Lane and 728 D. Highway, that happens to be bond bond. But if you look down below at the apartments, they took Hampshire Green, which is in Bedford, and Bowers Landing, I guess maybe that was complete by then, Hayden Green in Nashua under age-restricted, Maple Ridge in Bedford. These were the example ones.
I can give you why those were chosen. Those are all rental units, whereas the comparisons in Merrimack have been converted to condominium style of development. So the comparison from a rental to rental required them to look at out of Merrimack examples for, to get that comparable.
So this is going to be rental, probably?
These are rentals, yes.
Yeah, I take it then. Well, okay, that wasn't clear from the...
And they are the same examples essentially that were used back in 2014 in the initial fiscal.
Okay, but then if you go over to table four, for instance...
Well, hang on, I don't want to leave this one yet until I understand the point you're making. So I'm looking at the gas stations, I don't know where Peachtree Lane is, that's...
That's the one next to Burger King.
Okay, that's the one next to Burger King. It's called Peachtree Lane.
Okay, let's leave that, just skip down to age-restricted.
Okay, so I get that there's a building in Nashua and one in Bedford. Why is it you're supposing that those would be bad comparables to an age-restricted in Merrimack?
Only why did you pick those instead of the Merrimack one? We know we've got a lot of age-restricted housing in Merrimack.
But we don't have them built into an apartment building of 70 units that's rental?
Rental, yeah. They're not rental.
The rental part doesn't come through here. I don't know where it says that these were rentals and the ones that's known in Merrimack. So I missed that. But if you then go over to table four, we're looking at police calls now, if you look under the age-restricted there, they've got three other places that are not the ones they use for income. These are ones that they use for the number of police calls. So let's say the rationale is, and maybe there's a good reason for all of this, I just, just got to look at this recently.
I understand your concern. What I can say, and I think the information I had passed along to you today reflected that, was when we did this in 2014, after the final peer review report was completed by our net development, he and I sat down with Mark Fugere, who was the person who did the fiscal impact for the applicant, went through, developed, and in that summary table that I'd sent out, those were the items that needed to be addressed. And in my review of this particular fiscal, it is consistent with the same fiscal that was approved by this board in 2014. And I am extraordinarily comfortable with a couple of minor changes as I've recommended in my recommended conditions, that this fiscal impact analysis is accurate and appropriate for the project.
It could be. I'm just not clear from reading this document by itself.
So I know that having had some involvement with different projects that try to come up with numbers like these, sometimes you're approaching the municipality and saying, you know, how many calls for police have you had at Bowers Landing? And they don't always have the numbers. And so you say, well, let me go see where I can find somebody that does have the numbers. In this case, Bowers Landing is the one listed here on table four and there's some other ones that are here. But sometimes you don't have any choice because of where you're going to get the data from. But I guess fundamentally, and this is sort of my engineering background, you've got engineering background too, pointing out that they drew data from one place or another place doesn't necessarily make it bad data.
No.
So what is it that you think that makes the data bad?
Why did they do it? Why did they...
Because it was available, data that was available to them.
Rental.
Where does it say that?
But we knew, it's always been said that it was rental.
The applicant said that. They prepared it and presented it to us because it's what they have.
Well, okay, I guess I missed that here.
Well, it's not so much that, but I mean, whenever I'm looking at some statistics in some scientific report or whatever else and someone says, well, that data isn't reliable because of X, I want to know, well, you know, what's the basis for that? And so is there something about choosing these properties that makes you say, well, they're different and, or I know that they're different, or we can't rely on them to duplicate what's in Merrimack because...
Because I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I don't, I know that you emailed around Tim the peer review for this financial report. I didn't have a chance to dig into that.
The summary of it, I didn't send.
The summary. I haven't had a chance to dig into that, but this question is a very, very important one if the board is willing to consider whether tax positive is the metric. And I don't know whether we're there yet or not, but obviously if it's, if the data is wrong, then that changes everything.
I would certainly be comfortable and recommend that if the board does want to go with using fiscally positive in each phase as a basis for phasing.
Yes.
That you also require that that be peer reviewed at the time by the peer review consultant to verify and basically assure the board that that is the case.
I'd be okay with that.
I'm okay with that. Absolutely okay with that.
At site plans or something like that when you're looking at phases, because each one of their lots is essentially a potential phase, the way they've got it drawn up, unless the board chooses to change the way that they're approaching it. Further discussion on any of this stuff, phasing or otherwise?
I guess I'm hesitant to give up on the entire CUP definition and put it all into fiscal phasing net positive type of a number. I still think that the whole point by allowing the CUP process, by putting that in and defining the areas along DW Highway that we would allow to do that was because of bringing in mixed use and conditional use permit development as opposed to making something fiscally positive or not. And so while I think that's an important criteria, I don't think it's the only criteria we should be considering. I think we should still consider the intent the board had when they developed this whole process of having a mixed use, integrated use development coming forward that wasn't just apartments or wasn't just retail or something like that, but in fact was integrated to the point that most of these apartment buildings have little to any access except by car to the commercial or any of the rest of the development. I mean, they're two, they're almost completely separate except for the age-restricted housing that Alister's not happy with and I'm...
And I thought about the same thing. I mean, there are sidewalks along their drive, but it's a long walk up a steep hill to get around from the residential on up to the, to the commercial. And I think people would choose to come in their car to get to those places. So this tax positive concept or this insistence that you're mixed use in each phase comes from, I don't know if it was a correct understanding or an incorrect understanding, but an understanding that when you come forward with large volume residential, you create the possibility that the development has a negative tax impact on town. Uses the schools, uses the services, and we don't want that to happen. And so we want to make sure that there's some commercial in there so that there's some black ink on the books. As it turns out, the applicants represented to us that, that assumption that you need to have commercial to be in the black isn't correct and actually the residentials are more positive than the commercials in this particular site. Now, doesn't mean that you disregard all the other things that go along with a CUP and master planned and commercial and all of those kinds of things. And obviously if it's the will of the board to say, this really isn't at all about whether you're tax positive or not, but the fact that it's an integrated development and needs to look like an integrated development and be built altogether and at some point kind of completed altogether, that's not, I don't think, an unreasonable approach.
I want to delve into the things that are totally outside of this project, but we've gone to the idea or the concept in several different hotel developments in town, saying that this would be a fiscally positive, nice development, and turned right around and had it be a tremendous strain and burden on the police department because of the clientele that they bring in and allow in and things like that. So I'm very nervous and concerned about any development, especially of a large volume of people in a very small area, and coming up with fiscal developments and say, sure, that's going to work out just great, nobody's going to have a problem, we'll only have 30 calls or whatever. And I just, I'm skeptical and would like to see a total integrated type situation that might alleviate or ameliate some of the opportunities and problems that have developed at some of the residential hotels in town.
That's a good point. That's an absolute good point. Some of those things in terms of being able to count on what someone says financially or whatever, comes with our ability to trust our peer reviewer and test their assumptions and make sure that we understand what they're doing. And if we don't, or we don't think that we've gotten the right product from our peer reviewer, we've got to pick a different peer reviewer that gives us some data that we, that we, you know, have some confidence in.
Just as a aside, there was no peer review done for fiscal impact on either, on that hotel project. That was...
Right, no, that wasn't. And I don't even know if the...
I don't want to cast any aspersions, whether intended or not, on the peer review that was done previously that was not involved with that particular project.
As far as I know, the CUP process is the only planning board function that requires this fiscal impact study where we have them done. But we have had four or five of them.
Well, there've been three. This is the second time for this one, so this is technically the fourth time the board has seen one of these.
And the outlet mall in both of its phases is two more.
Well, that was a different, that wasn't a mixed use CUP. That was, I'm talking just in terms of mixed use CUPs, this is the fourth time for that. Again, I think there's, there needs to be some way to, I, going back to where this was in 2014 where you required a commercial component and the evolution the board has had with the other two, I would think it would, it's, it's a stretch to say that based on how you allowed Flatley to do residential only first phase, but not all of it, and the other one to basically be based on fiscal, I think there's an equity issue that somehow we need to come up with a way to get this without specifically requiring a commercial component in that first phase. And I, yeah, and having done some research back on the Flatley project based on the conceptual discussion that happened last time with regard to the connection that's required for phase two of that project and looking into the minutes, the motion was made and it was very clear, actually it was Tom, you made the motion, to phase it in the way that was proposed with the residential parts of the buildings first and then the connection and second...
For Flatley?
For Flatley, it was your motion.
I, in fact, thought I was against that project.
Oh, you actually...
Maybe I moved it. I am against the project, but...
But the fact that you put in commercial, if we enforced a commercial element, just let's say a gas station, I don't... let's say a gas station, I don't see how that actually addresses the issue that you raised, Tom, which, and I know where we're going, because we seem to have a, one or two residential, large-scale residential units that seem to encourage opium or wherever it is, and I don't think it's going to get any better with our friends over the border who insisted on saying you can all have marijuana as much as you want. I don't think that having an industrial development on the site will change the behavior of people. I really don't. I, I mean, it really is, do we go with the fiscal valuation, or do we go with some before they can do all the domestic, residential? It's a, it's a coin toss, really, which way we think. I think fiscal is more important, because that's what the town needs, is it can't afford to have anything that isn't cash positive. Your call, I, you know, which way my vote is, but I've only got one vote.
And if you really want to stretch it, you have two different types of residential, so are you technically mixed use with just the residential portion?
You know, I think there's always a way to make an interpretation that satisfies, if that's what you're trying to do. I, there's, there's definitely some improvements in this plan from what we saw in 2014 with, with reducing the footprint of the residential and doing three bigger buildings instead of four, or maybe there's even five before, larger buildings, and kind of moving away from the boundaries. And I think there's some improvements in those areas. But without sort of having any clue of what the commercial would be, other than saying, well, the market might decide, I'm having trouble kind of feeling what's integrated with what? What do, what do these things have to do with each other? What could go into these places that are somehow functionally related to a couple of apartment buildings that are nearby? I know that Lynn had talked about kind of thinking about it as being almost kind of a self-contained property that, and, and the commercial will always require some customers from off-site, because having 200 apartments isn't going to be enough to run any business. But where's the common sort of master plan to this?
True.
Yeah.
There's a couple of things that I'm, different pieces that I'm looking at. Fiscal impact, it's very different now than it was 20 years ago. We're looking at rental properties, and we're looking at a combination of rental properties and elder, elderly?
Senior, whatever.
Age restricted, some post-children people. And years ago, we were looking at properties that were being developed, and how many kids, school-age kids per unit we were going to have, that number has diminished significantly in the past 20 years from what it was ages ago. And so therefore, when you look at residential properties, and 20, 30 years ago, there was an impact on the schools because of kids. I don't think you have that anymore.
To that end, actually, if you go into page 10 of my memo on the top, my recommendation as part of the fiscal impact is to actually modify, based on the types of units they're talking about here, because right now, they're talking about 72 two-bedroom units, 24 studio units, and 61 bedroom units. Using the same approach we did for a multiplier as we did with Monahan, based on that type of thing, we're talking about between 13 and 14 total schoolchildren out of the entire development.
That's my point. I don't think the retail residential is going to put an impact on the schools that it would have done 30 years ago. I also don't compare what we're talking about here to the residential hotel properties.
Exactly.
I don't think there's, I think that's night and day. I agree that the residential hotel properties are putting a strain on non-school facilities, and I'm not going into it any further on that. So I don't see that as an issue. I think fiscal impact would be positive on this. But again, I look at wanting to have some facilities for these residential, there's nothing there for them. They're going to have to get in the car and go. I want to have something there, I don't care what it is, I want something there other than a gas station. It just, and then we can go down to the, what we did with Flatley, we could say, okay, we'll let you build the residential first, but not all of it. Maybe you can build three-quarters of the residential, but you don't get the rest of the residential until you put in some commercial stuff, which goes along with what we did with Flatley.
Yeah, kind of Flatley approach. And you still have the flexibility to let the market decide, it's just, you got to get, you got to get a client.
Yep.
Go find one.
Yep.
But are you saying what that would be in?
No, I'm not. I'm just saying, if you let them build some of the residential, then having some residential there may encourage some kind of commercial, based on the need of the residents that are there.
Right, and that makes a lot of sense to me, too. But it's also sound like you were getting at another point, which was, and I think where I kind of picked up on it was when you said not a gas station. So it sounded like you had something else that would be more characteristic to support the, the community.
That's correct.
The residential community, but it wasn't a gas station. And that hasn't been defined, other than we see commercial areas and a gas station as being kind of the highlights, right?
And that, I think, is our, or was our concept of doing mixed use. It's a, it's a community. You know, a gas station is kind of, well, if we can't do anything else, we'll put a gas station in there and that covers us. And that doesn't fit.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I want to hear.
But my concept of it is, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay. So, so, yeah, so that's the point that I was trying to understand more from you, was so that the concept of the gas station being the fix-all, or that.
Now, maybe that's what they need.
You know.
But don't just say, that's, that's my token.
Yep.
And maybe we say, go ahead, you can build some of this residential, but you can't get it all, because that's kind of our carrot that says, if you want it, because obviously the residential is the most financially feasible for them.
Right. And we've heard that.
And you can get part of it.
That brings everybody.
But figure out what else, these people that are living their need, and come back to us and say, okay, this is what they need, and we're going to do it. Then I have no problem with it.
Right. But when we looked at the Flatley property and we made that same recommendation, we didn't, we didn't have the details of what the other.
The development agreement and the conditions of approval for Flatley only require that it be some sort of commercial development south of the St. Cobain driveway with a connection to the apartment project.
Yep.
And the first time that we approved this, we had the same concept in their first phase, their residential was all in a phase, and we required there to be some commercial in first phase.
Yep.
Some commercial in first phase.
Which, which, to me, meets the criteria that I have envisioned as the multi-use.
Right. So they, they do have commercial here, they're showing it, but, but what I'm wondering is that we're hearing is that maybe, goes back to Alistair's comment, which is, it's not substantial, that it's too small, that it's, it's not what we think would be a defined community. And I don't know, no one suggested what would be kind of a, a good example for this? Are we talking like a grocery store or something like that?
Well, but I don't think, I don't think they're in a position to say, this is what we will do, because we don't know. We don't know what the demands are going to be, and that's why I say, we, we come in and we say, okay, you can have part of the residential, build the residential, get it rented, see what those people need.
I'll play devil's advocate. Because the commercial uses that are proposed here haven't changed since 2014, what's changed in the board's position since 2014 regarding that mix of commercial uses?
I'm just.
I think the board, at least when I was thinking of it, I wasn't thinking gas station versus restaurant versus something else. It was put some commercial into that first phase and figure out what works. Just conceptually, you got a couple of 7,200 square foot buildings and a 20,000 square foot building. I assume that the gas station is sized for a gas station, but, so 7,200 square feet is a bit smaller than Dollar General, or a pharmacy, or something like that, if those were retail buildings. If they're office buildings, you're talking about, you know, dividing it up into six suites of, you know, 1,200 square feet in two buildings, you'd need 12 tenants to fill those things with offices. A 20,000 square foot retail or industrial building is not big enough for a grocery store, but a lot bigger than a pharmacy or a Dollar General or whatever. So it's probably broken up into several things to be in a 20,000 square foot building. And what kind of retail do those end up being? A few 3,000 square foot suites, or two tens? Restaurants, a, TGI Fridays-type restaurants, 4,500, 5,000 square feet. A giant restaurant is like 7,500 square feet, and there's a vacant one built by Terra in Nashua, brand new and ready to be built, ready to be occupied if anybody wants it. So 20,000 square feet is, is much more than you'd need for a restaurant.
And again, I think these are conceptual basis. This is the, the top four, and when you get to the individual site plans, those aren't going to be as shown and configured on this master plan. That's why we have the follow-up site plan process.
No, and I'm just trying to think through, what are the possibilities for what could come? And I know we're not trying, we can't predict the market, because you don't know what will come, but you know what kinds of things are out there. 20,000 square feet in one use there as an industrial use, that could fit what some unique client wants for whatever they plan to build, you know, use for industrial space. As retail space, it's kind of not quite small enough and not quite big enough for either of the things in the market. Anyway, the concept of having Phase One include their residential or some of their residential, and some kind of commercial, seems to be something that there was some support for. I don't know what your thoughts are. Continue that discussion. When we considered the Flatley parcel, they conveniently had five residential buildings, which divided up well into this concept of do some and then do the other. Here, their, their general residential is in three buildings, so, you know, one-third could be held out, or you could hold out the over 55 housing into Phase Two, or, I mean, I guess the applicant can kind of figure out what they would propose.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I add, perhaps help the deliberation a little bit? I'm Bernie Plant, one of the principals of Edgebrook Heights.
Thank you.
And thanks for your time and all this deliberation. Historically, Edgebrook Heights has owned this property for about 10 years. And if you drive by there, you'll see that we have a sizable sign advertising 35 acres available. Most people know it's industrial. And in fact, we tried marketing it for industrial purposes. The topo, what has driven us to the residential and the, and the conditional use permit, is really the topography of the site. It's not suitable for a large industrial use, as it drops down, perhaps a little more so than the Nashua Corp. site next door. Nashua Corp. has, you know, 500,000 square feet of space, but there were different environmental and different planning board rules and regulations at the time that that was put in place. I think we also have to remember what happened at Bowers Landing across the street. I think we all remember that at one point, that was generally retail with some restaurants, probably Harris Pond, a bank, Chinese restaurant, a French restaurant, and other retailers, all of which have gone by the boards. This is, as we all know now, Bowers Landing is generally.
Harris Pond.
Probably Harris Pond, Harris Pond is generally an office use. And we expect perhaps to see some office use here at the Edgebrook Heights project. The market is good for residential use at this point. The CUP alternative is favorable to us, because, as I said, for an industrial use, it just doesn't work. We can commit, I think, that the lot, that we will not revisit you for change of use for lots A, B, and C, as happened in the PRD, I think that, or the PUD that Tim spoke about. We are committed to commercial use. We've owned this land for a long time, and really, the, the benefit, the financial benefit for this project will be, once we get that front area built, we're building all the infrastructure to support that. And with 12,000, based on the traffic count, about 12,000 vehicles a day, we're not going to attract a restaurant to that location, we don't think. With 230 housing units, it's not sizable enough, Mrs. Christensen, to attract a little store to go in there, just because the traffic is so low, and another 230 housing units is not sufficient to support that type of use. So we are very much open to any type of commercial use that's logical and is beneficial to the residential use that will go along with it. We do get hamstrung when the commercial, a commercial use is tied to the phasing of the residential. Anybody that wants to do residential, and they will want to come into the project all at once, it's most cost-effective. We can give you our word that we will not be back to you for residential use, multifamily residential use, similar to what's going in there on the front lots, and that we will put together a marketing plan, which we've really been prevented from doing up to this point. We just settled the appeal with our neighbors, which has gone on since 2014, only in the last couple of months. So we really haven't been able to put a marketing effort together for the commercial property there. So I think the best we can say is that you'll, you know, you would have our word that we would put a strong effort into the commercial end of things, and get that marketed as soon as we get a CUP approve, approval. That's, although I don't think, I was in the assisted living business for about 10 years. One, I just said that we would, lots A, B, and C, which are commercial, we would not come back to you for residential use, but I'd like to carve out of that, if an assisted living, dementia, memory care, or nursing facility were to consider one of those lots. We have tried marketing it for that without success, but if that ever came up, we would like that opportunity, that be considered as a commercial use.
I think assisted living and all of the higher levels of memory care do fit within commercial, the definition of a commercial use, even though people are living there, they're there receiving health care, and it's a health care facility.
I have, I have no, no objection to that at all. The assisted living, anything above, if you do just age-restricted, that's not commercial, that's residential.
Right.
But any of your assisted living, your memory cares, those are, those are commercial, as far as I'm concerned.
Those types of uses that require full-time staff, basically.
Yep.
Right.
I have no problem with that. And there's a need for that.
Right.
That's what you originally had planned, wasn't it?
It was.
No, and they marketed it and they tried.
Yeah, because of a lack of market. And I think that's the whole point here, is that to try to force a commercial use at the time that we can get a good chunk of this thing done, and we're not walking away. We're Nashua guys, and we've developed in this area for a long time, and we're going to see the commercial end of this thing done. And we hope to be back to you with site plans or an amendment to the CUP shortly, as soon as we can get, get these things marketed. But to stall an entire project, and that's what would happen, is if we can't go ahead with the entire residential piece, the age-restricted and the rental apartments, it stalls the whole thing on us. And that's where we are. So.
I'm just trying to prevent an end run around.
Yeah, no, I can tell you, I tell you that, you know, you have our word that there will, would be no end round.
Okay.
End run, sorry.
Yep, I know what you meant.
So, we've owned it for a long time. The predecessors, Gutierrez Company owned it for 20 years, had close to 200,000 square feet of office space approved on that site, right where our commercial buildings are, and had no success in marketing. And they, they kind of packed it up in New Hampshire. They're prolific developers, most of the, a lot of the stuff you see around Burlington at 128 and Route Three there, Keurig and Millipore, that's all their stuff.
Things are changing.
They are.
I know you have to see both sides of the argument that you're making for us, though, in that if you've been marketing this for a decade, and that someone else marketed it for a decade, and really haven't found anybody that's interested in doing some commercial development here, the other side of that argument is, when you build your three commercial buildings. buildings, you'll still try as hard as you've been trying before, or maybe you try even harder, but it may be decades before a commercial developer comes around, because it's already been decades and nobody's been interested in it.
Well, our...
And so that's, that's the jam, is if you have two decade, decade or two decades of residential with no commercial, then this isn't ever a mixed-use development.
Right. So that is driven, of course, by location and traffic count, the commercial side of things. The industrial side of things, I don't think is, is driven by traffic count necessarily, but access, as Bill would probably tell you, office and industrial. And I think that's what we're relying on, is probably office and industrial. We have not been able to market the project, the site, for the last four years because of the appeal and because of a lack of CUP approval. Gutierrez Company did market it for, for a long period of time for office. And the reason they bought it was they were, they were relying on the circumferential hire at the time. That didn't come to pass and, and they're... So I think that we will have success. It'll be a small commercial use. I don't think it's going to be a restaurant. I don't think it's going to be a store. So I think that's what we're left with, is a commercial, office, small, industrial type of use in all, in all reality.
But the market is very different now.
It is.
Than it was ten or twenty years ago.
We've got a, we've got a vibrant market right now. Yeah, yeah. And we, and we'd like to get out and start marketing it, no doubt.
Yep. So, so some of the things that spring to mind as you say that, if you're talking about small offices, you know, professional offices of an engineering company or an architect or a lawyer or doctor or whatever, medical clinic, those kinds of things are going to draw their audience from outside the residential development. Maybe a few of the people who live there use it, but they're not the bulk of the client. That kind of leans me towards what Alastair was saying, was put that commercial use out front so that people don't have to drive into your residential development into lot C to get to it, as one concept. The other thing that sort of comes to mind when you say, well, it'll be some kind of small commercial or maybe some, some light industrial, is I can't fit that into a master planned concept where these things are supposed to be all part of a one. There are three things on a lot together, but they're not necessarily related to each other or doing anything in relation to each other.
Well, I think you perhaps make the argument that hopefully some of the residents that are living there will be working at some of these commercial spaces.
And I think that frankly, that same argument can be made for the flatly approval is what they're proposing and what's being built out there. They're not necessarily going to be an integrated, it's a mix of uses on the site.
I disagree with that. Comments? Questions? Tom?
So you, you brought up Harris Pond, and I guess I'm just a little curious how you think you're going to do something different than what was done there. I know Lynn has said that it's a different market, but is that area developed sufficiently enough that it's not going to just be a competitive space?
What space is that now?
Harris Pond across the street from you.
Harris Pond is generally office now, huh?
I don't even know what's in there. It seems empty all the time. I drive by there, so...
Yeah, it's, it's...
It's a lot of empty.
But there's a whole lot of new condos that are getting built behind there.
Well, there are. So I'm wondering if condos make a difference.
And that, and that may, that may stimulate some redevelopment of Harris Pond.
Yeah. So Harris Pond was set up as retail. I'm not too sure it would be a good candidate for commercial space, industrial space because of, as Bill pointed out, ceiling height and parking.
The way it's built.
Alternative uses. I think that we have a clean slate here and hopefully we're going to attract someone that's going to come in and say, this is what we want, a thirty thousand square foot building to do this type of work. And you've got a spot there that's, that's vacant and, and we're back in front of you bringing that plan forward. That's what we're hoping.
It might actually stimulate some reuse of the Harris Pond because it's right there. I would hope.
Yeah, I mean, if you think about it, a coffee shop nearby, some condolences across the street, and so there's some potential for some mixed, integrated development already in that area.
And I would, it would stimulate some of that.
You know, and granted, there is a fair amount of housing going in behind Harris Pond.
Yep.
Coupled with your housing, may bring enough density into the area to bring in at least a small grocery store, although you don't seem very positive on that.
Well, I don't think small grocery stores exist anymore.
Well, that's true, but it's a long distance for anybody in there.
As somebody who's been trying to get an alternative grocery store in this town for seven and a half years, not there.
Not going to happen.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I was going to ask if Jim could come back for a moment too on one of the design pieces, but if I may, it's like Jim. The, I think the Harris Pond example perhaps is a, an argument for supporting the build a suit approach, because it generates, the build a suit approach generates viable, I want to be there businesses, as opposed to I'm just going to try to fit into some space that I can rent at relatively modest rates. And our speculating about what can go in there also, I think, touches on the notion of build a suit versus spec. We're all theorizing speculatively what could go in there. Well, they would have to build something to continue that theoretical discussion we're having tonight, but if they can build a suit, they don't have to, they don't have to speculate with a building that may or may not be viable. We're merely speculating with theoretical approaches, which is not a costly endeavor at the moment, but would be much more so if a spec building's built and it just doesn't match market. The, and lastly, the, the, just a question if I have, and I should know the answer to this, and does the flatly example for the commercial component, is that measured at the level of building permit issuance, certificate of occupancy, actual user in place? How was that defined?
I don't know. Tim?
Off the top of my head...
I think it's building permit, because they can't get the building permit for building five until they've got commercial.
That, that's my recollection off the top of my head, without having the decision letter and the development agreement in front of me.
That, that was what I thought it was, what was effectively building permit issuance for that commercial P, commercial building. Irrespective of its size, by the way, it wasn't measured by size, it wasn't measured by type, and it wasn't measured by integrated concept with a residential component.
There was at one point them proposing about a one thousand square foot hot dog stand, which technically would have qualified.
Right. So where does that get us? I, I think nowhere, frankly. I think that what we're proposing here has much more, greater legs to get the goal you want by being able to build a suit than, than having a condition to put in a spec building of no, no type, no size, no functional use, and merely getting a building permit to do so. And what then extend the building permit indefinitely. With all due respect, I think we're doing something a little more responsible than that. Jim, if I'm, Jim wanted to talk about Mr. Nolan's question or comment about the location of the age restricted to fifty-five plus.
Thank you. And Alastair, I appreciate the, the comment. It, it brought me back to, I think, discussions on this project several years ago when I first introduced it. And I said, what is this land really giving us? And I'm glad Bernie kind of came forth with some of the, the comments about not being able to be developed industrial. This is seventy-foot grade change from this point to this point. And that's really why it hasn't seen the type of big box stuff other, other communities have. And I recall telling the board and walking through the existing conditions in, in quite a great detail is how we were getting access down to this lower flat area here for, for the, for the multifamily residential and how we found a flat area benched in here on this slope with this gorgeous view here. And we also were very concerned about the frontage. As they travel north on Daniel Webster Highway, this is really the first piece you see in Merrimack because of the undeveloped land over here. And so we wanted some more green space here than we did just commercial. I will tell you that this lot C, which measures about two point two acres, but it does contain some slopes there, we would not be able to fit the age restricted housing and parking and/or the clubhouse in, in, in that lot. So we would have a, in fact, we couldn't do it. We could not move this here. We like this location.
You proposed it there before.
We think there's more green across our frontage. No, I don't think so.
I mean, it was, it was not age restricted, it was assisted living.
Yes.
But essentially the same building size and structure and parking lot and...
There was never anything here for age, assisted, I believe.
Yeah, that was. That's where the assisted living was, which is why I make the point.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I think it might have been in the initial concept, but it never made it to the actual application.
So be, be that as it may, you know, we know throughout the years, assisted, residents like the security of the main street. They like the ability to see the building, like they see the entrance and the feed-in. We like the green space and the fact that it doesn't fit there. I just wanted to tell you, those are the reasons why we're not, we're not moving that in that location.
Well, I, I just can't agree with you, because if you look at the assisted living building that's been put up on Amher Street where a well-known manufacturing company used to be, and I know who's the chief executive of same, that assisted living place, and it's there for people who have got particularly issues of Alzheimer's and the rest, they can't see the main road, there's no green space, everything in front of it is sort of, we, Dave's Jewelers and Willie, somebody's...
Willie Jewelers, barbecue place.
I'm sorry, I cannot buy your answer.
But, but sir...
And if you're saying you cannot get it onto that site because of levels, then I'm sorry, you have...
No, I'm saying it's a spatial requirement. The site you, you call reference to in Nashua is much...
Oh, it was a huge site.
It's much larger.
Hmm?
The site you make reference to in Nashua is much larger.
I know.
Okay, well...
Yeah, I know.
What I'm saying is we cannot fit this program here onto this particular property. And we've got some older drawings from way back when that have always shown the assisted and the elderly. In fact, this building was rotated much closer to Daniel Webster Highway, and one of the changes this plan has that moved it back to create more green space.
I, I hear what you're saying, but i- in one breath, you're saying, well, the residents like being near the road because they find it secure and there's some green space. And then, in the same diagram, you've got three residential buildings buried in the back. And yeah, these are for older people, but they're still residential spaces and they're comfortable being in the back buildings on the back of your parcel, but...
Seventy feet down.
Yes. So I'm just, the, to say that lot C isn't big enough to hold the program, lot C is nothing, isn't even subdivided off, it doesn't exist actually, until we get to get a chance to subdivide it off. And so draw your lot lines where you think that they need to be to make it fit in the back and...
But the buildable area is what's not big enough. It was, it's irrelevant where we draw the lot lines. It's the buildable area in here does not fit this program.
Sure.
And we think this presents itself much better for vehicles along...
I don't want to go through the exercise of designing a program for you.
In fact, we were trying not to create a long strip of commercial along the frontage.
Yeah. I don't want to go through the exercise of redesigning it for you, but all you have to do is move the Pioneer Road towards Daniel Webster Highway to give yourself some more room on lot C, and you could have whatever space you need to put that building back there. But the point is, what you, the way that you have it designed, if I'm looking for professional office space, if I'm going to locate my law practice back there, being back away from the road where nobody can see me and behind somebody's senior living apartment building and trying to give people directions on how to find me and where they can park when they get there, I'm going to say, you know what? There's a hundred and fifty thousand other square feet of vacant, uh, commercial real estate in Merrimack, and let me go find one of those. And so by choosing that location, you're making it much harder to find that commercial development, to use that space. Everybody that moves in there is going to know, well, I can't make any noise because I'm in the middle squeezed between residentials. I can't do anything environmentally sensitive because I'm on the slopes of a hill and a river and traffic-wise, we can't do a whole lot of things. You couldn't put the gas station on lot C. And so when you, when you put that commercial back there, all I can envision is a very, very long time before anybody ever comes forward to build that. And as much as you're giving me your word what you won't do or won't ask us to do, ten years from now, it'll be eight different people sitting up here. And they'll say, you know, right? Well, Nelson will, Nelson's still going to be here.
Nelson will be here.
Seven of us. And frankly, when we, when we've seen that with the PUDs, only a couple of people from this board were part of the original approval of those things. And so you're asking different people and, you know, everybody has a right to come for some relief. I, I guess one of the things that I don't understand, and I don't know whether this sort of fixes the mixed-use thing, but frankly, if you want a big residential development, the zoning board can grant you relief for the use and the whole parcel. And propose, you know, eleven residential buildings and then bring us a site plan for that. So I mean, it, it seems that what you want is the residential development, and you're willing to kind of give some discussion to the commercial piece of it, but everything that you say is how hard it is to fill that and how much you've tried and how much you don't know what it'll be, and it'll paralyze the project if we require you to build some commercial to get your residential. And all that does is sing out to me, we're never going to get any commercial here. Not, not in, not in my lifetime. Yeah. Yeah, then you'll come back to the zoning board and say it's a hardship and be right, I guess that's the challenge that I'm having. Other thoughts or comments?
Well, on that topic, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Plant whispered in my ear that we'd be happy to consider flipping these two buildings. It would require a shift in the road, it would require a redesign of the road. I think it would have been nice to have had that comment.
Four years ago?
Four years ago.
I think I did. I think I did at the time say I liked it better the way that it came, but I don't know if I did.
But that is something they would consider.
So how do we get a, a phase one that the board's satisfied with that'll give you as much of your residential as we can stomach and you get us some commercial in that phase?
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, have we come to the conclusion that we need commercial in that phase? Or as I've tried to note, I think the approach we're taking has a greater chance to get commercial in the development than the, for example, the flatly approach that's already been approved. I'm not sure the, we, obviously, we would like to know if the board thinks that a commercial component in phase one is essential, or whether the fiscal metric coupled with the build a suit approach, which we think is viable, has good viability, is sufficient.
And to bolster...
And the restriction that Mr. Plant noted relative to non-residential uses, recognizing assisted living, memory care, nursing home would be deemed commercial.
Sure.
We're hoping we get there, frankly.
To bolster Attorney Westgate's comment there, the planning board should expect that flatly will come back to ask to amend their CUP, because they do not want to make that connection that the board required at the time in the phasing.
We'll accept it.
Now, they now know formally through me that the development agreement, whatever the language is, doesn't really matter, because the conditions of the approval and the motion that was made require that connection, period, without, if necessary, as necessary, doesn't matter.
Sure. I know that we keep hauling out other projects to be examples because we're all kind of basing it on our other experiences, but at some level, there's, there's a line where we should let those other projects come and be before us when we talk about them and their merits upside down or, or sideways. I started out the night saying that I'm happy with the tax-positive approach. I'm still there, but the reason that I'm there is because if this ends up being three residential buildings and the over fifty-five and the commercial never comes, I, I realize that that isn't exactly what a CUP ever intended, but it also isn't the worst thing in the world, in terms of what gets developed in the south end of town.
That's what market, it's what market conditions are dictating in this day and age.
Right, but I'm buying it based on the fact that we're going to get three residential plus the over fifty-five and that's it.
Yep.
The rest of it might as well be, you know, more of your dog park.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, following up on that, given that we've danced around the maypole for about hour and a half, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this, mark this for a CUP with the phasing based purely on the physical viability of each of the phases.
With peer review in each phase?
With peer review, of course.
Peer reviewed, each face. Is there a second for Alastair's motion?
I'll second.
Second for Alastair's motion. Before we take up a vote or continue discussion, have we satisfied any requirements we have to conduct a public hearing? Tim?
You have both at this, well, not necessarily at this meeting, but you did at the last meeting.
We did open up for public comment. And I assume everybody here is related to this development. There's no other public members here. Fair enough. With that, discussion on the motion on the floor. If there is no discussion... If there is no discussion, all in favor of granting the conditional use permit based on each phase being...
I think right now, you're just talking about phasing, correct? Or are you talking about granting conditional approval to the entire thing?
I said the conditional, CUP, grant the CUP with the conditional phasing...
Okay.
Based on fiscal input with peer review at each stage.
Okay.
That's consistent with what you seconded, Lynn?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, when you're saying that, you mean that plan?
No.
Each site plan has to come forward individually?
This is the master site development plan for the purposes of the conditional use permit, subsequent subdivision and site plans will be coming forth. This doesn't allow any construction to take place.
Yes, no, I understand.
And the conditions are on, I think, three or four pages of my 11-page memo?
Yes, including all those conditions that are on your memo of November the 1st, 2018.
Thank you.
I also would suggest we accept the applicant's representation, that they would do their buffering and screening along the northern edge of the property and not sort of divide A.
That's site plan.
It is site plan, but I think that it's also been a representation as part of the conditional use permit, that parcel A could be essentially separated by fence, and I don't want that.
Yep.
Okay. Motion properly seconded to grant the conditional use permit, subject to all of the conditions in the memo, and based on a phasing plan that is tax-positive at each phase, subject to peer review. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstaining? So, I counted Nelson, Lynn, me, Alistair, four, and Mike, four? Five?
Five. Five to two.
Five to two, to grant the conditional use permit on that basis. That brings us to the point where we're going to see you next month or so on site plans for these, correct?
Correct.
I assume also, as part of that, you're going to fix the book to get the plans in the right place, whether...
For, for purposes of moving forward with the site plan and subdivision, now that this has a conditional approval, I'm comfortable that there's enough information based on this conditional approval for the planning board to then go through the next step, they don't necessarily need to have the final approval of the CUP prior to the board granting conditional approval, but before final approval of the site plan and the subdivision, we would need final approval of the CUP. So, this would need to have all conditions met before you could sign the other plans.
The loose ends.
Correct.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Thompson, both, the, so this plan is what you have approved, this plan, of course, has the 55 and older up front, if you will, as does the...
No.
Well, that's what I want, that's what I want, I don't want us to walk away confused, that's why...
No, you just agreed to that.
No.
You did.
Your concept of the CUP is what was agreed.
I've agreed the concept of the CUP, your site plans, when they come in, may have to reflect your views of what you've heard.
That's, that's where I wanted to head, because the site plans have been submitted already...
With that...
With this approach, is the board saying we need to flip it so when we come before you on the 8th of January, the site plan should show the flip?
I'm not saying what it should do, you're the, you're the experts, you're on your team behind you, all I say is you should consider the point I've made.
Okay, all right.
So, if they revise the master site development plan as part of their final revisions for this...
That's fine.
Yeah, but Tim doesn't...
But they could leave this if they want essentially.
If that's what they want to put forward in it, that's the end of it?
That's the point.
I'll bow out.
I didn't want to leave it unstated.
No, I...
So, I'm barring it out.
It's very important that you clarify.
Obviously, it costs you guys a lot of money to change the plan, and it also costs you a lot of money to come forward with a plan we don't like, so...
I may have to let Jim chime in, because he's the one who has to do the work. The, and if I also may, the, as you know, the fencing and buffering and all that, we have, of course, depicted it to go around Lot A, not through Lot A and outside, but the final, under your regulations, buffering, fencing, and the like is a final site plan component too, so, to me, what you see for fencing now is the component of the CUP approval, but we have to detail that for you in our site plan process.
Yep, yeah.
So, and Jim, if...
Well, would it be out of order for me, Mr. Chairman, to ask to take a straw vote on whether we flip that or not? I don't want to assume one thing and do the other, frankly.
Not out of order at all, and so, let's kind of start at the end and go down and express your opinion about whether the over 55 ought to be on Lot C, or in that general vicinity, or up close to the road the way that the applicant's drawn it, or it's up to the applicant to figure out what they want to propose?
For me, it's up to the applicant.
Either one of them is, could be acceptable.
I don't feel strongly either way, I see benefits to both.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with Nelson, whatever you guys say.
I'm on board.
On board with whichever the applicant proposes. I like it better when it's flipped, but I, I can't say that you wouldn't be able to earn my support with it the way that it is.
I want it flipped. But you knew that!
I would go with whatever the applicant proposes.
Tom?
We're good.
Any preference?
I don't have a strong preference, I guess, it seems like there's some very good arguments to go along with Alistair's, and that, I think the applicant really needs to consider that very strongly, coming forward to come up with the project that would be best suited to all uses.
There you go, so you got your straw vote.
Thank you for those last comments, and thank you for taking the time on this tonight as well, we appreciate it.
Thank you for working through a lot of debate and a lot of discussion, it's never easy to kind of get your project chewed on that much. I hope all is well with Tom and his new baby, and everything that's going on with families and things all over the place, everything, all comes out well.
Thank you very much.
Yes, happy holidays. Okay, so, we do have you again as item six and seven, but we're going to take up a continuance on both of those as soon as I get done reading them into the record. Give me a second here, item six on our agenda is Edgebrook Heights LLC as the applicant, and Edgebrook Heights LLC, Wiggston Properties LLC, and Q. Peter Nash, 1987 Revocable Trust, One as the owners. Without objection, consider what's written in the agenda to have been read into the record, and the applicant has requested...
Continuance to January 8th, 2019.
And I make a motion that we move that to January the 8th, Mr. Chairman.
With no further notice.
With no further notice, Abutters.
Is there a second for that? Second by Lynn. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero.
Gentlemen, could we...
Let's, let us finish our business so we can go home too. Item seven is Edgebrook Heights LLC as the applicant, Edgebrook Heights LLC, and Q. Peter Nash, 1987 Revocable Trust, One as the owners. Let the remainder of what's reflected in the agenda be read into the record.
Chairman, I make a motion that we continue that to the January the 8th at 7:00 PM in this room with no further notice, Abutters.
Is there a second? Second by Lynn. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero for that. Item eight on our agenda is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Tim had indicated to me that we could benefit from some further discussion on our choice between electronic and paper packages, and based on the notion that the CUP was kind of the disaster electronically. Other than that effort when we got a huge document electronically that was hard to manage, I was actually quite enjoying the electronic approach to things.
Basically, I can't do both, so I need to know one way or the other, how, which way we want to go moving forward, because we did paper packets for this meeting, but it's easier for you, Tim. I, frankly, it's, it saves the town money and us time to do electronic.
But it costs us money.
I know that we don't want to do both...
If you print, yes.
I know we don't want to do both and kind of split and have some members do something...
I can't do that.
Can we do an approach that says it's electronic unless you've got a CUP? Because we don't get those very often, but when they happen, it does help to have all of this volume on paper, obviously.
Getting this electronically is not workable, but I like everything else electronically.
Turn your microphone on.
How about we do this, when we send the agenda to the chair and vice chair, if they indicate to us they want paper, we'll do paper.
Sounds good.
Oh, then you're going to get me yelled at when all these guys want paper.
But may I ensure that, that doesn't apply to plans?
Yeah.
Plans will still be set by paper. Thank you.
Plans, whatever. What does everybody else think? I mean, generally speaking, has anyone got strong objections to the electronic entirely? Nelson?
Well, yeah, if it was going to be one or the other, I'd have to go with paper, because these things are too much to handle, and the plans are too much to handle for my...
The plans will always come on paper.
You'll always get paper on plans.
Well, okay, then I'd still prefer, if I had the druthers, I'd prefer to have paper.
Okay.
And I'm old-fashioned, so you guys...
But he's an alternate.
He doesn't even get a vote, right?
Harsh. Tom?
Is there a reason that we don't put these on the website, that you're sending them under blind-covered links?
They are on the...
They are.
They are on the website, I don't link the full project packets through the agendas, however.
And you do that?
I could, it just delays my ability to get the information on the memos and the Google Map links that I do through the agenda, it would delay it slightly, just in terms of the amount of work that goes in. Once I have a memo done, I can do the PDF quick and put it up, it's a lot more for me to get all the backup information scanned, go through the process with my staff to get all that other thing, it, it's an extra day or two for me to get the full packet, as opposed to the individual memos like I'm currently doing on the, through the agenda.
Critical question, is there a reason we should save this book?
I have one in my office, they're going to have to revise the whole thing anyway, based on the conditions.
So, it doesn't matter, okay.
My difficulty with the electronic was that I, I'd get the email, but the email would wash out in my system, and then I couldn't go back and find it, I couldn't find the links that went to the various different pieces, parts, and when I went to the website, I don't think the entire packet was there enough to be able to get to where I needed.
If you go to the agenda right now, it's just the staff memo and a Google Map is all that you get through the agenda.
So, so that, it ended up being useless to me.
Okay.
So, I prefer the paper just because I can find stuff that I need whenever and wherever I have a chance to look at it, which is quite frequently not when I'm sitting at my desk.
So, with a couple of folks with some significant preference for paper, and a desire to do it all one way, why don't we just do paper again? Does anybody have any objection if we go all paper again, the way we used to do it? All right, so we'll go back to old school, and we'll try to experiment some point when technology changes, and it does, it's a little bit different approach to it.
No bishop changes.
When the town council puts some computers at every station.
There'd still be an issue with trying to zoom in and change pages and all those kinds of things.
Yeah, they do it one in there without a problem. Anyway. My second item under this was, going back several meetings, I think it actually might have been the last meeting Dan was here, there was some question about having regular project updates from staff in terms of things that are going on. We can do that, but it's not going to be particularly useful, because what we can tell you is, yes, a plan has been signed by the chair and secretary, yes, we've granted or signed off on a CO, and yes, it's under construction. Beyond that, my department doesn't have a role in the construction part of the process until we get to CO, so, we could certainly do that, but those really are the only three things we'd be able to report on from my department's perspective.
I don't mind having that information, and although, obviously, I know the things that are signed, there's telltale sign that I figured that part out, but I don't always remember what hasn't been signed and what's still sort of laying out there, and the, you know, one of the ones that we signed tonight was the subdivision, I can't even remember when we considered La Stalka subdivision, that's at a year plus ago?
Ask Dan. That's the one near his house, it's been a while though.
It was February.
February was, I think, the extension we granted, yeah.
I honestly, until I saw it sitting in front of me, wasn't computing that it had never been signed by now. So, those are the kinds of updates that are set.
So, those are the types of updates we're available, we can give you, beyond that, it's really building, public works and fire, that's in the nitty-gritty of the actual construction process that's going on in the sites. So, we could certainly provide that monthly if the board wants.
And I think honestly, I don't know is an answer, I mean, if somebody says, what's up with this? I haven't heard anything, you know?
Okay, just wanted to clear that up, because I know it had been sitting out there for a couple of months, and I haven't been to a meeting to really address it since then, so.
Good, good point to make, and kind of adjusted. Tom?
Sort of to that point, I, I think one of the ideas was, was things like the development up off, I knew the street name and I forgot...
Chamberlain Road?
Chamberlain Road.
Yep.
Where we've gotten a lot of flack and feedback, both at the town council and here at the planning board, about how that developer just clear-cut that area.
Yep, and there's not a thing we could have done about that.
Was that necessary, or was that part of his plan, or...
Before he even had that plan signed, the tree clearing took place before the plan was signed, so long as they don't do any stumping or ground disturbance, a property owner has, has every right to clear every piece of tree on that property. It's only when they disturb the earth that you get into any issues with the site plan approval or alteration of terrain permit.
They also don't necessarily run into problems with erosion control immediately when they do the trees, although eventually they will.
Sure.
If it's, if it's been stripped off like that. So, a lot of the stuff lower down on the hill, although now it's been cleared, wasn't particularly high-value scenic trees or well-developed, or things that would probably be kept as a part of the development, and obviously, they've got a landscaping plan as a part of the development.
You'll be seeing them in shortly for an amendment to that plan to count for that lot at the corner, if they want to get that prepped for commercial development.
Oy.
Surprise, surprise.
The one at the corner of Chamberlain and...
The triangle piece.
On the other side of the road from where the...
Yes.
The one they said they couldn't help...
They couldn't use.
...use to do the road alignment.
Well, they, they had to do some grading on that, that's part of this, is that PSN H, EverSource required them to move the utility poles further off of the edge of pavement into that property, which is why some of the grading had to change on that.
Yeah, they moved, they moved the poles back all the way along the road, not just that piece.
Hot dog stand or something.
So, it turns out something they said they couldn't do, they can, when they get the right encouragement. Well, glad, glad to hear from them for those kinds of things, but, yeah, even just sort of knowing what another...
The other piece to that, and I know one of the Abutters' complaints, was that it was noticed as having a DW highway address, that's not something that community development has any control of, the address for a property is what is assigned by the fire department in assessing, and legally, that's what we have to notice it as.
Yep.
So...
I remember the discussion about that issue and people complaining about it, I never really kind of put a lot of weight into that objection about it, that it was somehow confusing because of the address that was given, because it's noticed to Abutters, and when it arrives to you and says, dear Abutter, you know that it's the property described in the letter.
If I have a little bit of sensitivity to that, it was because my department was thrown hard under the bus at a council meeting by a certain individual complaining about the process, so, I, my radar's up a little bit on that particular...
Council member or public member?
Public member, and, yeah, it's, who also threw, who also threw the police chief under the bus as well, but...
I'm no expert on police chiefs, but I find that throwing them under the bus is never quite the right move. It doesn't pay off in the long...
Ah, I entirely agree with that, but never mind.
Anyway, that's all I have tonight.
Kind of the police ends up being a good move. All right, does anybody else have any other items of concern?
I have one follow-up, this is kind of a first cousin to what we've just been talking about, and that is, is there a way without, I don't want to create a big deal out of it, but of notifying board members when administrative approvals are given for building expansion, and the one that comes to mind is the clinic up in, up next to the bowling